The March 24th, 2025 Auburn City Council Workshop will be called to order. Tonight will be solely focused on a budget workshop and the first item Chief Chase is going to provide an overview of the Engine Two Construction Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to show you what we've been working on and where we currently stand. See if I can zoom this out so you can see everything. Bear with me, there's a lot. This is the detailed design package, so there's a lot of stuff on here with a lot of detail, but what we really wanted to show you, the existing lot includes the existing station and our whole plan for the project has been highly prioritized on keeping the existing station operational throughout the build. Early on, we had explored opportunities to find a different location. We did a lot of call analysis, response time analysis, and found that the existing site was the best site for us, but we couldn't go through a 12-month build with a relocation very efficiently either. So our design is using the existing site and keeping the existing station operational. So this plot here shows the location of the existing station, and this would be the site plan for the new station with the existing station literally right on the front apron of it. So what that's going to allow us to do is keep the existing station in operation throughout the build. All of the subs have been made aware of that build challenge, and so they're pricing it accordingly. Ultimately, what will happen is, once the new station is built and we're able to move into it, we'll just simply respond out the back and around the corner for a period of time while they demolish the existing station, which is on the front apron here, and then they'll finish the site work and final paving, which will allow us to do our drive-through bays at that time. As you can see, we have the floor plan on the existing site. We did need to buy a little bit of land to the left here, which that has happened for quite some time. We'll have drive-through apparatus bays here, and then this is the residential quarters, and we'll get into the site plan. We'll also have a public entryway for giving burn permits, addressing customer and citizen complaints or issues, and there's some public parking here at this driveway. Employee parking is located over here.
So these are just all the current DD design sets. So this is the set of drawings that the contractors have used for pricing. So this isn't the final design package, but it's the pricing set essentially. So we're at like an 85% drawing set now, very close to complete construction documents. And so that's what this was used for our final pricing, which we'll go over here in a few minutes. This is some elevations. This is the front exterior.
This will be the view from the road, the front of the building. As you can see, the apparatus bays here, public service entry here, and then the residential quarters, the fire department here on the right. Exact opposite view, this is at the rear of the structure. So again, you can see that we have drive-through bays and then residential portion. Some 3D renderings of the same space. Again, front of the building seen here, rear of the building seen here.
You can see right now the building has photovoltaics on the roof. We're doing a cost-benefit analysis to see if that's worth it. So that'll be part of the final pricing set and determinations. So this is your first floor plan. As you can see, as Bob mentioned, the apparatus bays on the left, public entrance. You'll walk into a vestibule area. There'll be an office right there. There's a small conference room in the front of the building, and then the day room and kitchen area to the right with an outdoor patio. The outdoor patio is screened from residences. If you look at the package that you've got, there is a landscaping, a preliminary landscaping plan that shows you that that's all screened with shrubbery and greenery, so the public won't see what's going on there necessarily. But then, as you move down that hallway to the right are all the dormitories, and to the left is the turnout area and equipment decon areas, as well as showers and bathrooms. And then in the rear is the fitness room. To the left of the apparatus bays are the equipment storage and grounds equipment, all the stuff that the fire department uses to maintain their equipment, and not necessarily daily items, but things they need.
Couple of things to point out in the design. We've done a lot of work to incorporate design features for firefighter safety and incorporate the modern concerns of firefighting. One of those is cancer and cardiovascular health. Council has supported some of our initiatives with cancer and cardiovascular health. New station designs have this kind of design in which what we consider is this is the hot zone. This is the area where there's going to be dirty contaminated gear, and we do a lot then to minimize that getting into what we would call the cold zone or the living quarters, because if it's in the living quarters, now you're exposed to it for much longer periods of time. So as engineering design, what we do is we incorporate what we call a warm or a decon corridor. So folks having come back from a fire where all of this equipment is dirty, when they're done rehabbing and getting that gear back in place, they come into this decon space. We have a large shower for deconning equipment, so you could put backboards, long equipment, those types of things in it. We have our PPE extractor. It's a hyped-up washing machine to extract those carcinogens out of our external PPE. That's our extractor and dryer. And then we have a corridor that they enter into that provides them a laundry facility for their clothes that were under the PPE and these decon showers, so that by the time they enter the living quarters through this, they've decontaminated themselves, and they're not carrying carcinogens into a place where they're going to sleep or a place where they're going to eat. And that's a real functional design and really common in new station designs as we talk about employee safety and cancer reduction. And then the other real health and wellness piece is this fitness space. Engine Two is, you know, we call it the hunting camp. It's a garage with a little hunting camp on the side. There's no physical workout space, and certainly health, fitness, and wellness is a big part of what we do. In our stations that have wellness and fitness equipment, it's used on a very regular basis, every day, but most duty days by our staff. So this would give those folks down at the Engine Two station that health and wellness opportunity as well. Any questions?
Counsel Pla.
Sorry. Yeah, two questions. My first question is, from a square footage perspective, you talk about, is this facility planning for the future? As far as, like, I'm looking at six dorm beds. Is that meet current needs, or is that, you know, going to be where we're at in two or three years?
No, I think that's a great question. When we talked of the large public safety facility assessment, we looked at futurizing and making sure we're prepared for the future. And the general consensus is that we believe that the best deployment model in Auburn is one in which we have a series of stations that can provide a fire apparatus and EMS apparatus from each station, and should development happen in given areas, we certainly could get by a period of time by moving equipment, you know, having people respond to longer distances, but that might elicit another station at another time in a big development area, all of which, again, provide a suppression piece and EMS piece. So this station was designed, we have an existing engine in Engine Two now. We have the need, based on call volume, to start to incorporate a third rescue into place. The station is designed to be able to house an engine company and a rescue company. That's the six bedding spots, if you will, that you would find. Engine companies of maximum of four, sometimes three, but by standard four, and then EMS companies of two people. So that's where that scaling came from.
Thank you. And I did have one other question, which was, you talked about some of the health and wellness stuff, as well as some of the decontamination technology. Are there any technologies in this new build that will be unique to the fire department at this facility that we haven't yet? Are there going to be new pieces that you're excited about that exist in this facility?
Yeah, well, I can certainly speak operationally to it. Again, Engine Two, there's a lot of features here that Engine Two doesn't currently have. An office space, for example. A lot of what we do now is report writing. We have the need to document what we do, much more than we did 50 years ago. So having a space where they can have a computer to do their medical reports and their fire incident reports is important. And this small conference room is really intended to double as a training room, especially during COVID, but we have seen because of our call volumes, it's very hard to get multiple crews together to do a training. So more of our training has become remote or online-based, or we'll do it at Central and we want others to be able to watch it elsewhere. So being able to have the crews that are here have a conference room where they can go in, participate in that training without having to come to Central, is a technology and an operational piece that we've not yet had at that station. Certainly, the cancer prevention pieces. And then I'll let Dan speak some to, you know, efficiencies. He certainly understands the building and system efficiencies better than I would.
So we've been working with the design team quite a bit to make sure that we're as efficient as possible, looking at heating systems, radiant floor systems. Does it make sense to do wall-mounted units versus radiant? The economies associated with both the functionality in terms of the fire department, what works best for them, and all of those things have come into what you see here in the design. And if you look at the roof plan, you can see the rooftop units. There is some, for example, the equipment bays and those out storage areas, those will all be radiant heat. It maximizes the ability for them to store equipment against walls, have rack systems without having to worry about being in front of the heater, blocking the heater, those sorts of things, as well as fire departments wet. And the best thing to dry out this type of equipment is to have heat coming from your floor. I have one in my mudroom. It's the best thing ever. Everything has the opportunity to dry much more efficiently, as well as the, I guess, the electronics in the building. It's much, I want to say, more advanced and efficient. The way the calling system, the alert system that Bob is installing that will be also in the public safety building is much more 21st century than the existing system. So things don't all have to turn on. Things get ramped up when they're needed. The ability to have things on motion lights and those sorts of things. It's as efficient and as well thought out as possible in today's standards.
One of the big benefits of radiant heat, and particularly in fire apparatus bays, is you create a giant thermal mass under the trucks. So when the doors open and all of your warm air escapes, because we have to run on an incident, you have thermal mass there to then release that heat back in and make that space warm back up more efficiently. And they've historically found because of the air turnover when we're in and out with the doors, that's an efficient way to heat those types of spaces.
Other questions or comments?
I wondered if you have got any plans for bid alternates. I was thinking like the photovoltaics, that might be something where even if you don't think it's feasible, if the price came back, and not that anybody's expecting inexpensive pricing nowadays, but maybe if it came in really inexpensive, it would change the calculations a little bit.
Yes, those types of things are being discussed and what the final package will be for construction. We're doing the same thing at the public safety building. That's one of the things we're looking at right now is possibly doing ad alternates for those sorts of wants, but not necessarily needs.
Yeah, there's some ad alternates, and we're also still in the value engineer. There may still be some value engineering opportunities. Like Dan said, this is really an 80% project, but we're meeting weekly now as they get prices back from subs and the subs come back and have, you know, simple alternatives for us to consider that might make their installation a little bit easier and be able to reduce those costs and stuff like that. So I think while we are 80, 85% there, we're still finding some efficiencies in the bids, and then that opens up the opportunity for alternatives.
The budget that you see included in the packet, that's a result of almost $500,000 worth of value engineering that was done a few weeks ago. To try to find those efficiencies and find those things, they're getting prices back. If you change the wall system to this, we can be done three weeks quicker, and that will save you X amount of dollars. And so we're making those changes as quickly and as efficiently as we can and making sure that those all make sense. Like, it doesn't make sense to go from, you know, it's much quicker to put sheet rock down to the floor, but at the same time, there's overspray, and so that doesn't make sense to go away from a block in that instance. So those are the types of things we're looking for, is making sure we take advantage of all the things we can and save money, but at the same time, making this billing as long-lasting and as maintenance, I won't say maintenance-free, but as maintenance-less as we can. Any questions about the budget? You see it there. Originally, there was allocated, I want to say $5 million so far, and in this CIP, you'll see an additional 2.7, or maybe it was $4 million, and now there's an additional 3.7 or $5 million. $5 million and an additional 3.7. But we're substantially under that, but that's for all building projects, so.
I got a couple of questions for the building, not so much for the budget. If we hire ladies to work for us, how will it work for the hazmat problem that you're talking about? And then would you explain the six rooms? Is it one-person a room, two, three, four, whatever?
Yeah, I really appreciate that question, because, you know, one of the things I've stressed as we've talked about these is being able to accommodate our more gender diverse or more diverse workforce, period. There's a delay, so I touch things and then it doesn't react. I'll speak to it a little bit, Counselor Walker. The bathroom facilities are all, there's no more like you've seen when we did our tours at Central Station, where you go in one door, and there's four stalls, three urinals, and three showers, right? They all have their individualized spaces for those. So these decon showers aren't as elaborate and have full toilets or whatever, but they have their own individualized changing room outside them and shower included. This space was designed so that there's individualized lockers right here, so an individual doesn't have to go back to their room to get a change of clothes. They can keep their shampoo and soap there, along with, even if it's some scrubs or some sweatpants or in a t-shirt at the moment, whatever it is, so that when they're really dirty, they can get into one of these individualized changing spaces, derobe, shower, put on clean clothes, and then exit out into the living space with some privacy. As you'll see, the bathrooms here, full lavatory, sink, and shower, and individualized, one per person. The dorm rooms, we have six dorm rooms, four beds in each dorm room. We anticipate having six riding positions in this building, right? So each room would be assigned to a riding position, and we have four shifts. What that means is that every time somebody laid their head down at night to sleep, they would be in that room by themselves behind a closed door, because while there are four other beds, the intent there is they get done at the end of the night, their bed goes up, the next person's bed comes down, and now B shift comes in and sleeps in that same space. And that flip-up bed design really was in part because of a lot of feedback from our staff. They really prioritize, again, in a diverse workforce and hygiene and all of those types of things and concerns, that they have their own beds, but that they also be able to sleep individually while they're there. So we won't have an instance in which we have two people sleeping in the same room, but everybody's kind of got their own linens through that design. And the Murphy bed design, really, from a budget standpoint, we knew we had a really limited square footage to deal with in this building, so it was the most square footage efficient way for us to meet the employee requests for that. Thank you for the question.
The second part of that is, if you needed two, well, say, men, to sleep in the same room, would that cause any harm?
No, I don't think it would. An example, if we had an extreme emergency, right, and we had to bring in some more staff, we would do some policy support to it, but the bedroom is big enough that two beds could go down in those emergency short-term situations. We couldn't put four down. It just wouldn't accommodate that, but two on either opposite wall, opposite, adjacent to each other would work.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Appreciate the update. Okay, so let's move on, and we'll start talking about the FY '26 budget. I think everybody has had a chance to hear the city manager's overview and review the budget book. And as we talked about at the meeting, I think the first order of business here is to look at the supplemental consideration sheets, which are near the halfway through the orange tab on the expense side. And there's a number of items listed here, two of which are populated, the administrative supplemental considerations and the non-municipal supplemental request. And I think the question with these is whether or not some, all, none of these are going to be in the budget discussion. So if you think about this, it would be helpful to have a top-line number to work off as we discuss, you know, what the impact is of the proposed budget. So I think the first cut is whether we even want to consider these items. If we do, we'll move them on the budget. The city manager will adjust the proposal. We'll have a top-line number that includes whatever we move in. It doesn't mean they'll get funded. It just means it's in the discussion, right? I don't think it's going to be helpful to be pulling things in and out of this as we go along. So I guess let's look at the city administration supplemental considerations. We can work down through these and see what the sense of the council is about what we want to do with any of these individual items. So the first item is the automated solid waste recycling waste carts from the Assistant City Manager's overview. If you'll recall, the automated pickup won't start until into the second year, but the consideration was for the vendor to provide the carts and manage those carts. I mean, there's other ways to do that, but Assistant City Manager can speak to this, but my understanding is in their analysis, it's less expensive to have total cost all in. It's less expensive to have the vendor do this than the city, right? There's alternatives. We could buy the carts. We could store them. We could distribute them, handle the calls when they need to be replaced. The vendor could provide the carts. We could do the storage and the management of them. But this number that's here is management by the vendor. I think the other thing I would say about this is, with some discussions I've had with the Assistant City Manager, I don't think that 271 is the right number. I think we should think about this as 183, because this current number that's in here is one waste receptacle and one recycling receptacle for every pickup location. And as we all know, that would assume 100% adoption on recycling, which we're not there and seems like a very large stretch. So if we assumed a...
Can you clarify that? You said it would 100% take up on recycling. This would be for both, right?
Yeah, so if we think about this, you'll need a waste receptacle at every pickup. If we assumed a 35% adoption rate, which is, you know, some probably 10% growth over where we are today, and you redid those numbers figuring 100% waste carts, but only 35% of the stops have recycling carts, we'd be at 183. And remember, this is over, there's a cost that escalates slightly each year, but this cost is spread over the five-year period. Basically, the vendor is building in the capital cost of procuring the carts, and then, you know, there's some escalation each year because their labor costs or whatnot goes up, but they're going to manage the process over the five-year period. So thoughts or comments about this item? Counsel Pla.
Just clarifying question on your last comment about there will be ongoing expenses. This is probably not at the same level, or are we, because there's more administration and maybe a few replacements?
The first year would be the lowest, and it escalates slightly per year as we go along. But this would be the first-year cost. You know, I mean, theoretically, we could say we're not going to have these till the second year. You could push this all in and say, do this over the four-year period. You're going to basically take this 183 plus the cost of money, and you're going to just add that on to year two through five. So the idea here is to spread this out over the life of the contract to be able to have the carts and the management of those. Is that clear?
Okay, thanks. Counsel Pla.
To piggyback off that, my question was going to be, how much are we saving by buying them now? If it's $10, I don't want to vote for it this year. If it's $100,000, that's something to think about.
Yeah, I don't know that we have, I guess, the dollar amount that we're saving, but what it comes down to is, I think, the savings in terms of staff having to manage this cart system, that was part of the motivation of having them provide this to us. What I think you're looking at is that if we take, if you say we're to cut this full amount for this year, that means that the years two, three, four, and five are going to be much higher, right? Because they're just really spreading this over five years, so now you're just spreading it over a smaller amount of time. To the mayor's point, the number is 271, I believe, and unfortunately, my meeting with the vendor and contractors tomorrow, that's the first one after we've awarded this, I'd get some clarification. But my expectation is the reason why we're seeing the uptick in the out-years is because we're not starting the program until year two. So there's a management fee that they're building into this that they don't really have to manage. We're just buying into the purchase of the carts in year one. They're not having to really do anything beyond that. We're just paying into it to spread that cost out, and so it's not such an impact on us.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if, to Counsel Pla's question, if the city just did this, we would have to hire people to do this. We'd have to get vehicles for them. We don't have any space to store, there's a lot of these carts. We'd have to have a place to store these, so we'd have to build some type of a structure to store them in. You know, so you'd have somebody to answer the calls, take these out, and it seems like something that we wouldn't want to take on, because I don't think we're going to save substantial amount of money, if anything.
I think it's definitely more efficient and cost-effective, I think, to have them handle it. To your point, I think there's a significant impact for staff to be, there would be hiring that we would have to do just to manage the carts themselves, I mean, just all the way across the city.
Counsel Walker.
I have a couple of questions. We have a lot of people that put trash... We, we have a lot of people that put trash out every week, and a lot of them have different-sized carts, and I'm going to guess that a lot of these people have the right-sized cart that you're probably going to have somebody purchase. Now, I, I would think we would want to know who may have them carts, so that we're not providing carts to people that don't need carts. The other thing is, I know a lot of houses I go by have two and three carts that are out there in their single-family homes. If we provide one cart and their carts that they have don't fit, what are they going to do? Ask for a second cart, or they have to buy the same cart that you've got? I mean, where, where, you know, especially holidays, people use four, five, and six carts, or trash bags, cans, whatever they can put stuff in. They're not going to be allowed to throw bags out beside these new carts unless someone's going to give permission to pick them up. I don't know how that's going to work, but how, how are we going to deal with all this big change?
So lots of education and information, I think, is how to deal with the big change. I mean, I, I agree with you, there will be a change in this. I mean, if, if someone can't just put out a, a regular trash can or another different type, it has to be a specific automated trash can that they can collect with that, with that truck, being able to do that. I will certainly get clarification, you know, from the vendor, you know, the contractor, when I meet with them tomorrow, to, to understand how that, how, how additional carts, if that's an option, but there would be a fee that would have to be purchased if there was an additional cart option to that, but it does have to be that specific type of cart, so it can be picked up by the truck, it can't just be any, the size isn't so much the, the concern, it's the type of, the size matters, but it, it's more the, the type of cart that it is to make sure that it can be picked up is more the concern, to making sure that they have the proper ones there. If they put out a smaller bin that wasn't that, that cart, it will not be picked up. But that's part of the education, I think, on the front end of us getting this out, and that's that rollout, that's, you know, we'll be working on that long before the, the pro, the, the program is implemented.
And if they, when they go to automated pickup, they're not going to pick up trash that you put on the side of the road that's not in a qualifying cart. To, to Counsel Walker's point, they may have to take it over to main waste of energy, or they may have to purchase an additional cart, but they're only going to be, the trucks, the truck can only handle picking up a certain configured cart, correct?
Correct. They would have to bring it. If it doesn't, if it doesn't fit in their cart, if they put a bag on the side, just say outside their cart, it will not be collected, it would be a, a violation, and they would have to bring it, or hold it to the next weekend and bring it, put it in their cart.
And I, and I think this is correct from our discussion, but I can't remember 100%. The big cost for the service over the five-year period would be higher if we stayed with traditional pickup, non-automated, mostly because it takes two to three times as many people to do the pickup, because the automated pickup, they run the whole thing from the cab, correct?
Correct, and that's, that's, we don't have those numbers because they didn't quote us that way, but that's certainly what they're telling us. It would be, it would be much higher cost, and they would have, it's more challenging for them to be able to maintain the, the personnel to that point of three, four times what they have with, it's one person driving a truck that can do the automated system.
At least, looking at the, the automated bins that my, in other areas, you know, brother and sister have, in Maryland, they have them, they're large, they're very large. And so I, I think, you know, my neighbors who are having two or three bins out there, they're smaller trash cans, so I suspect, in most cases, most of the time, most of the year, it wouldn't be an issue of not being able to fit a week's worth of, of trash into the bins.
Counsel Platts?
Yeah, my follow-up question, I just want to, I want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not advocating that we don't consider covering this service, but I would like to ask the question of, where, where was the precedent set that we purchased people's trash bins? Again, I'm not advocating that we don't, I just want to understand, I have two trash bins at my house, and I believe I purchased them myself. I'm just, I'd like to learn a little bit more about that.
So, in effect, we're not asking people to purchase the baseline trash bins because they're paying for them through tax dollars, right? I, I think that it would be very difficult to say to people, go out, get your own trash bin someplace that meets these standards, and, you know, and replace it and whatnot. I, I don't, in, when we had the, the subcommittee and Casella came in and described how they do this in all kinds of other communities, either the city is providing the trash bins or the vendor is providing the trash bins, so that they get the right ones. To the prior point, they even talked to us about different sizes, because these trucks are configured to handle a certain bin, and they have problems in the Portland area where some of the communities have this larger bin, and they also have a smaller one, and if it's snowing or wet, when the arm tips up, the smaller bin goes right in the trash, and the guy's not climbing out, going into the compactor and fishing it out for people. So, in effect, you know, the prior council, the Counsel Walker and Counsel Whiting will remember, midstream, there was a discussion about doing this, and it was going to be, I think 500,000 is the number, if I remember correctly, for the waste receptacles, and then something more for the recycling receptacles, but I think it's easier to manage if you just put it in the program and it's in the solid waste line than trying to collect money from people to, to purchase cans directly.
I, I guess I fundamentally agree with that as well. I would just, to, to Counsel Walker's point, I would hope that we have a very clear policy on what happens when I, when I break my bin, and, and what the next actions are when I, you know, when my bin no longer functions.
Yeah, in this, in this, in the plan, they're going to manage this, and they're going to manage the replacements, and they'll manage new customers that are coming on, right? They, in, in the contract, as I understand it, there'll be a certain margin of bin turnover expected in there, there'll be a certain margin of new people coming on during the course of the contract, and they'll call the vendor, and the vendor will manage the replacement or the provision of the, of the can, of the waste receptacles. All right.
That's accurate, that's, that's, there'll be a, a, a percentage in each year that we, we work with them to say, you know, we have to add a certain number of bins anticipating, some of them will break, I mean, some of them might be hit by plows or whatever, and things like that, so we have to own the fact that that's just going to happen to a certain extent. So there's some percentage that they've already talked to us about, we haven't figured that out yet because we haven't got the contract, but it'll be built in year after year for budgeting purposes, we ensure that we, we can make sure they manage it, but we're, we're funding that and making it happen.
Any other questions on this item? What's the sense, Counsel Cal?
No, I was just going to move towards that, that your, your suggestion of 183 makes a lot of sense to me in terms of, you know, probably a more accurate approach in terms of the recycling bins.
So what's the sense of the council to put, to move, to move this in to the baseline for discussion?
I, I would, I, I will, with, I'll put an asterisk next to that, you know, I went through the supplemental considerations, and out of 1.6 million, in my first glance, I only supported about 250,000 of that, and automated recycling was not a part of that. So I would support automated recycling, but just to give you a sense of, there's a lot in this list that I'm looking to cut out, and I understand we'll go down through that.
And I think that the exercise tonight is not to say, by moving this in, we're not saying this is going to be funded at all, or funded at this level, it's just going to be in the discussion of prioritization against all the items that are in there. If we were to say tonight, we're not doing this, it's not going to be in the discussion at all, we're basically saying we're not doing it. Counsel Whiting?
Yeah, I, I, I'm fine with having a discussion about it, just obviously clear that this, from my understanding, all this, if we approve to add it in, this will, this will increase the overall budget higher than what the, the other budget is, so.
Yeah, so, so basically-
Because I see it's 40, the city's operating expenses are 4.4, 42 million, and then, you know, after adding, if, if we agree to all this, it will now increase it to 44, so, I just want to make sure this is on top of the municipal budget debt.
Yeah, and as we-
It will just make the, make it overall more money.
Yeah, exactly, and as we go along, the manager and I, depending on what you add in here, can tell you what the new top-line number is, and it'll tell you what the percentage increase is, and you're exactly right, it's going to increase it. I think we're all understanding, from having looked at this budget book, that there's going to be quite a lot of discussion about what gets prioritized. Alls we're saying tonight is, does this even get in the conversation?
Mr. Mayor, do you think it would be prudent to, as we go through these items, to hit the high-dollar amount ones first? Or do you think just going down the list is fine?
I, I was just going to go down the list, because I, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So, like, the sense of the council is to move this on to the budget for discussion? Is that correct? Okay. So the next item is bulky waste disposal. The $175,000, you recall, is the amount of money that it's costing to pay main waste of energy for the free drop-off at their site, and the, the issue here is a whether to continue this or not. I think if we're going to continue this, we'll have to have some discussion about how to manage this differently. If someone doesn't leave their trash on the side of the road and always goes to main waste of energy, it's pretty apparent that this cost that we're incurring is not just for Auburn residents, right? There's, there's other people, you just drive up to the shack, you tell them you're from Auburn, they tell you to go dump it. You know, there's people pulling in there with 16, 18, 20-foot, two- or three-axle dump trailers with four, five-foot sides on it, that's not some home, homeowner, right? Contractors aren't supposed to be dumping. If they pull up and tell them, I'm from Auburn for bulky waste, they just tell them to go dump it, and we're paying the weight. So the question here is, do we, do we want to put this in the budget or not for this, for discussion, and if, if we do, we're going to have to have some real discussion about a better way to control this. Counsel Whiting?
I guess I was going to suggest that instead of having free-flowing system in which people, unknown people can do it any time of year, that we just take the week that we used to have in, say, spring, and say, from this state to this state, you may bring your bulky waste if you are an Auburn resident, and this week only, and maybe we could even have somebody from Public Works monitor, you know, just, and that would probably be cheaper, or some other, some way of monitoring, but that might be a way of, I mean, you, it's hard to know, maybe you end up with 60,000, but it would be less than this.
So we could, we could look at a program that limits the time to what you're talking about, but a week would be too much. It's too much volume all at once for main, main waste of energy, so, you know, maybe a month, maybe a six-week window where we work, that, that's a reasonable approach we could look at, but just wouldn't be able to be that short of time.
And you'll recall, you can take brush free now. You, you can, if they bring it to main waste energy, we're paying for it, but they can take it over to Poland and dump it free. I don't remember the name of the business, but there's directions at the old-
Old Castle.
Old Castle, thank you. Counsel Whiting?
Thank you. Maybe, I know other cities around, surrounding Auburn, they, they have a sticker, so you've got to show that you're a resident of that town, you've got to show your license, some sort of document you are, then you get a sticker, and then, you know, as long as they see that sticker on your windshield, then you're good to go and dump, that might cut down on some of the contractors from, or people that are out of town that are coming and just saying they're from Auburn if that's occurring, so at least they'll see that sticker. If they don't got a sticker, then at that point, they get charged, so, and if we want to charge for that sticker, I mean, it's an option, I know other towns do that, it's like 10 bucks, but, you know, it's cheap price to pay to help.
I'd ask a similar question that I asked on the first-line item, which is, is it normal for cities of our size to pay tipping fees at, you know, transfer stations? I know in small towns, very common to just go drop your stuff, but I know there are other municipalities where the residents pay.
Yeah, Lewiston has, you're allowed to bring up to a certain amount, so it's almost like you've got a, a certain doll, you know, amount of pounds that you're able to bring over, and so it varies, and it really, it's hard to compare because it depends on what you have for a transfer station, what you currently have for staffing at that transfer station, and so, you know, I think we could easily do something that Counsel Whiting mentioned, or Counsel Weisner, as far as stickers, and, you know, then you have to decide is somebody paying for that, or, you know, for less than $10,000, we could do six weeks and have a staff, you know, not a staff person, we would hire somebody, short-term, you go out there and you're just checking addresses, and that's all you're doing. You're getting on the scale, checking addresses, they're marking it, moving the people along, and we could do that and have a window for just that amount. I can tell you that that amount will come down, because if it's not all year, not everybody's going to hit that window, right? They're going to have something that comes up later. Part of the conversations that we had, when we looked at doing the pilot, was, I don't have to wait, well, what they were waiting before was two years, right? So the thing is, you still don't have to wait. You can, I, I, you know, you can take a good-sized amount of debris that you might have from your home, bring it over, and it might cost you $20, you know, it's not, we're not talking about a, a, a big lift here in a cost if you didn't hit the six, six-week window and you had to bring something in, you know, it's, it's, you know, depending on what it is. We still turn, you know, they're turning away people that are coming in with, say they tore their deck off, and, you know, you've got to pay for that, that's not, that's not the normal bulky waste program, it never was, still isn't, so we still have those restrictions. I do think these numbers are inflated, as, as the mayor said. I think it's very easy for a contractor, or easy for someone to come in and just say, yeah, I live at such-and-such street, and, you know, they're busy, they've got other things going, they're not checking necessarily IDs, they're just getting an address, and they're moving you along. So I think, two things, if we were to do that, that number comes down, we put in a little extra to make sure we're covering someone to be there, or we're offsetting it with, you know, some revenue off a sticker, you know, that'll be a big education piece on both of these, right? Some people are going to load up thinking it's still available and go, and then learn, oh, I can't come until May, so.
Counsel Walker?
Yes, I, I believe the six-week is a, is a great number, and I think everyone could do it, but I think we must insist that they have a city sticker. Now, whether it says Auburn on it, or you come up with a, a number that means that you're from Auburn, but I think then you don't even have to have a person standing out there, because the person at the, the little building will see that sticker. We did that years ago, and we didn't have any trouble with them citing a sticker, saying, you know, okay, you're from Auburn, and, and years ago, I don't, I don't think we allowed someone that had a, a big 24-trailer behind to say that that was cleanup week stuff, because we know where, what it was, we all know it was contractor work or whatever, so we, we could be pretty picky on allowing that type of a trailer, because it, it's going to weigh tons and tons, that shouldn't be allowed anyways, but the stickers, it, it must be a thing that they must come to city clerk's office, buy that sticker, I, I think $10 is too high, because we're giving them the gift of getting rid of their trash anyways, but, but a $5 sticker, and it's good for them six weeks, and that's all that's good for free. After that, you want to come with it in Christmas time, you're going to pay for the weight that you're dumping off, or the two bags, or whatever it is.
Counsel Cal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do, do we have a sense of what percentage of the households in Auburn utilize this service?
We could probably take a look at the data, I mean, they have entries in there, they're tracking, but it's, it's challenging, we're not, it's, they don't have a, they just don't have a system that's built for us to be able to pull this, and so we might have, we're able to get the weight, there might be something in the back that, where they're tallying that weight, where we could determine it's X amount, but we wouldn't know how many households, because some people, they use it on a regular basis, they'll go, you know, every month they're bringing something to get rid of, so it's, it could be from the same household, so.
every month, they're bringing something to get rid of. So, it's, it could be from the same household, so.
Yeah, we, we have to be cognizant of the workload we put on the people in the shack, right? Because they're handling everything. All the commercial haulers are going through there. Sometimes you go and there's people bringing bulky waste. There's commercial haulers. There's, you know, a dozen vehicles lined up to weigh. So, whatever we do has to be fairly streamlined, or we're just gonna back this up more, and they need to get people through, you know, reasonable time uh, through the scale. Council Walker?
Yeah, I, I've talked with the management out there about stickers, and they would love to see the sticker, 'cause it, it just, it's easy to look down at that windshield and see it's right there.
You know, if, if you're gonna look at doing stickers, you, you might wanna consider, we just, we, we also have solid waste to drop off, right? So, when you go for that, you don't go by the shack. You're just driving in, you're going over, and you're throwing it into a bin. You have no idea who's throwing into our solid waste either.
Right.
And so, if we're gonna ramp up something for stickers, it might be, "I need a sticker to also drop off at the, uh, for solid waste." Because there's also, Minnet is there, is the other town that allows for, um, you know,
Yeah.
their solid waste to be dropped off. They're doing it in their bin. We're doing it ours. We're hoping everybody's being mindful of that. But a sticker, when the mayor goes and brings his trash, that at least would have a sticker there. Somebody out there would at least see that. We definitely keep honest people on this, I guess.
Yeah, I, I really like the idea of the stickers. Um, whether we ask people to come in to get them, or whether we, you know, if we're trying to encourage our Auburn residents to, to use that, and there's a bin right now, we pay for it. It may be a benefit, or at least look at the cost of mailing these things out to people, if that's, um, 'cause it, it's gonna be, you know, it, it's a barrier if people have to come into the, in, in to get them. Maybe that's what we want, but at the same time, if we're trying to say this is a service, um, and we want people to, to use it, I, I'm not sure it was gonna be that much more, that cost expensive to, to put a sticker in the mail and send it to all the households, but.
Well, and, and the sticker would help at the recycle bin locations as well. So, we have that at Grace Lawn currently. We're, you know, exploring a second location for that. But then again, somebody has their sticker. It's displayed. PW does go out and do some spot checks during certain times, uh, to make sure that its residents are dropping their recycling off in those bins. Having a sticker makes it really easy for them.
Keep in mind, this program that we're working under right now is, has only been a couple of years. So, it's not hard to change people back over to the way it used to be. It used to be like two, three, four weeks, whatever that took the Public Works to pick this stuff all up. Uh, that, we, we ended that just a short time ago to try this out, to see how it was gonna compare. And it, I think it's all been somewhere near the ballpark, but it has got up there a little bit more than it should have. So, we really, we need to rein it in, and if you don't mind, I'd like to, I'd like to change that one seventy-five down to fifty.
I would, I would agree with that. I, it's really hard for me to get behind a hundred and seventy-five, especially hearing everything we've heard. Um, understand that we're just pushing it forward to, you know, next dis- discussion. It doesn't mean we're approving fifty. I, I would also consider that at fifty. I'd love to see the timeline, whatever timeline restrictions we come up with, and see if we can flush anything out. I mean, I'm also, eh, I, this one is probably not as fiscally responsible, but I'm, I'm also down to move it to zero and say, let's cap ourselves at forty or fifty, and we, if we come up with a solution, we can take it from the fund balance, but I don't really wanna say that, so. I, I, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, but I, I think what I'm trying to communicate is, um, this is not a service that is being used equitably by all of our taxpayers. I understand that it's available for everybody, but it's not being used by everybody, and therefore, I think it's something we need to look at.
Okay, so the proposal from Council Walker is to move this in at fifty thousand. Is that the sense of the group? Okay, we'll go on to the next items. Campsite cleanup. This is the program where the city hired, I believe, a third-party vendor. Uh, when we had homeless encampments, uh, that needed to be cleaned up, to remind the council. What happens with this is that there's numerous places around the city, probably about twenty-five, thirty known locations. They tend to migrate to some of these places. Almost all of them are on private property. Lots of people don't complain until it gets too big, and there's the, it, there's too much waste, and then the city goes out with navigators, uh, ahead of time, try to work with these people to get them into services. Tells them they're gonna move on. When they move on, there's lots of debris left, and the city's been cleaning that up. And this is the same amount as last year. Is that correct, the thirty-five?
It was, you know, we, we took what we believed would be the average year. There was a big spike the first year that we did a lot of the cleanup. We were probably closer around sixty-five, I guess you could say. And then, uh, last year, that number came down some, but we still had a couple that we hadn't cleaned up yet. Now, we feel we're at a pretty good baseline. We've done, we do work when it's on private property. We say, "Look, there's a certain piece here that we will assist with, especially if it's, uh, private property that we have agreements with as part of a trust, and it's, it's, it's trail access, those kind of things, and we, we'll work with them." Uh, some of the other private property owners, we, uh, we haven't been able, we just have not been able to help and assist with that. And so, it rea-, we really are limited on which private property locations. Um, but we think this is probably a good number. Uh, part of this is gonna be about trying to make sure we're enhancing some of our enforcement on this, too. And, uh, so before the encampment starts. And so, as services continue to grow and become available, our, the goal here is that we would see less of these.
Questions or comments on the item? What's the sense of the council on this one?
I, I support this one. Um, and I guess just to fast-forward to a couple lines down, when we're gonna talk about homeless and, uh, four hundred thousand, that's gonna be a hard one for me to support. Um, I feel like thirty-five thousand dollars for the campsite cleanup, I think, you know, bang for the buck. I think it's important for the community. I think these campsites are really problematic, and, and I also suspect maybe it's also a way for us to get in touch with some of these folks and put them towards different outcomes. I, I see Tim nodding. I, it's my suspicion. I don't know if that's true, but I feel like it's a good use of, of the money. I know we're gonna be talking about other homeless cause in three lines, um, but I just wanna say that.
Council Walker?
I also support it. I was one that had come to fill a hundred times and asked if we could do something, you know, in this line, and, uh, it's worked, so I, I don't, I don't wanna see it go away.
Council Wyden?
Yeah, I agree. Um, 'cause if we don't put anything towards it, we're gonna have to probably allocate later, and then we'll probably hear from it about trash in the community, and we definitely don't want that to be what Auburn's known for, so.
Yeah, I too, uh, support it, and, and, and an additional reason for me is that this is a, this is a community-wide burden, and the campsites are in certain locations. It's not really fair for private, you know, especially on the private properties where we work with that. We expect th- those owners to take care of this, when it's a community issue, so.
You good with this, Council?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with everybody else, and I think it's really unavoidable. It's just, it's a public responsibility.
Okay, so we'll move that in at thirty-five thousand. The next item is code enforcement. This is a new code enforcement officer. Just to be clear, that the, the understanding of this hundred and five thousand is that they'd be offsetting revenue. So, this is the tied to, um, the vacant building ordinance that we've been working on, and some other proactive code enforcement activities that don't happen today. Um, I, w- one of the ones I get calls about all the time is, um, junk cars sitting in people's yards all over the city. So, um, the understanding here, we, we haven't got to this, but we've been working on the fee committee, uh, Councilor Plattz and I, and then we'll be working more on this vacant building ordinance. Um, the understanding with this, if we moved it in, would be offsetting revenue for this expense. So, questions or comments about that?
Question on the revenue? Uh, is the revenue budgeted?
If we put this in, the revenue would be budgeted. We'd add, uh, so in the calculation, I've got going here, I know the city manager has one. I have, uh, in the calculation, city revenue increases, if we put this in, we would put on vacant buildings slash code enforcement, a hundred and five thousand dollar increase in our revenue side.
Okay, so the intent would be a zero net change? I would say for, not to keep talking here, but for that reason, I would push this forward to discuss it. I'm very hesitant to create a new, in fact, I'm very much against creating a new position. Um, but if the discussion is that this can create more revenue, why not talk about it? That's my opinion.
Council Walker?
Yeah, I'm in favor to, uh, discuss it and talk about it more, but I, I don't think I would vote in favor of it, uh, the way it stands.
Council Wyden?
Yeah, just a clarification. So, 'cause I, it's net zero, so the, we're expecting that this position will raise. Is that correct? Its own revenue to cover it?
Correct.
Okay. The fees and fines and stuff like, okay. I, I'm in favor of discussing it. I'm still not, I'm, I'm not sold on it yet.
Anything else on this one? Um, the next item is the third ambulance. This is really going from two and a half to three ambulances. Uh, Chief Chase is here. The city manager, uh, might have more detailed information on the, uh, call-for-service demand that's driving this.
Yes, thank you. Uh, so our EMS call volume has grown, you know, by approximately ten percent, uh, annually. Um, we're at about over fifty-five hundred calls for service a, a year at this point. About eight, uh, averaged about fifteen to sixteen calls per day, eight per ambulance. What we did in the current fiscal year that we're in, um, the, the driver for this is call volume, and so what we did is, we're currently staffing a third ambulance, um, forty hours a week, and that just started in March. And we picked peak hours to try to reduce that call volume, um, because we were turfing a lot of calls to mutual aid partners, where there were longer response times during peak hours. And so, the current budget, um, supported that just for four months, um, so we started at the beginning of March. Uh, this addition here would allow us to continue that third ambulance, only those forty hours a week during peak hours, but it would be for a twelve-month period rather than the currently funded, uh, in this budget, uh, four-month period.
So, the hundred, the hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred is, um, overtime staffing cost to staff that during peak hours?
That's right. Yeah, and the, the city manager, we've tried to pull some, uh, revenue numbers, a- and what we're basing the revenue on is, is purely an estimate of how many calls, uh, another EMS agency may be grabbing, um, from us during those peak hours, um, and our average reimbursement rate per call. And, and my expectation, I'm very, very confident that, um, we would see an increased EMS revenue of in the order of seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars a year um, for this, uh, at this point. I think there's missing revenue that I'm not able to capture, and that is availability of us getting other EMS calls in other surrounding communities, because it's really a system strain issue that we're addressing here, right? Is that we don't have, at times, we don't have the system capacity, um, to meet those call volumes, and uh, the mutual aid system works based on the fact that when we're really busy, we hope somebody else isn't. And so, there's probably some additional revenue from that that I'm just reluctant to commit to you to, but I'm, I'm relatively confident in the seventy-five uh, to eighty thousand dollar, um, revenue increase. The other intangible, um, benefit to this that we're really struggling with, one is employee retention and burnout. Our call volumes are such that it's pretty exhausting on employees. And the other piece is that we could, as call volumes go up, we continue to struggle with compliance and training issues, because those staff are just always on those calls. So, um, you know, we, we don't get the opportunity to do on-duty training and some of those things. So, it's a, it's an incremental step that we think, um, certainly the call volume justifies now, but that we're also gonna continue to grow in, and it gives us some capacity for the continued expectation of increased call volume.
Questions or comments? Council Wyden?
Just a comment. It seems like having an extra one, uh, also gives you a little protection in cases of vehicle that's down. I'm not sure how often that happens, but I know in Public Works, it happens all the time, so with plow trucks and whatnot.
It does, uh, we ma-, we maintain, um, four ambulances, the actual equipment of ambulances, and, and this is really, um, that's already in, in the exi- operation. This is really the staffing to bring a crew, a crew onboard for those forty peak hours, and it's, it's weekday type of call volume. We're a service center community, as you all know, so th- those business hours, when the population in the city limits really goes up, is where we see an incredible increase in, in our call volume for motor vehicle accidents and other things of people that are visiting the city.
Council Wyden?
Thank you. Um, with getting this new ambulance, we have the staff available, or we need to hire more, uh, staff to operate this vehicle?
It's currently budgeted in a way that we'll be using existing staff on overtime during, during that period.
Thank you.
Council Platt?
Thanks. Um, what percentage increase in call volume would you need to see from here moving forward to be asking us for a third crew? Uh, sorry, a fourth crew, a fourth crew. When does that next inflection point occur?
I think that, uh, I think as we move forward, the question is gonna be, how do we broaden the hours to capture more with the existing crew? So, it might not be four, it might be forty hours, it might not be forty hours a week, or it might be distributed differently. It may go to forty-five or fifty hours a week, because we find that, um, you know, Saturdays are the next incremental bump where we would wanna put a crew on for, for an eight-hour period. Uh, and so, I think that we have a lot of incremental steps before we get to the point. I don't, I don't see us going to a fourth crew, uh, anytime soon. I think it's, it's further incrementing the hours in which the third crew is staffed. And I know that's a little ambiguous, but I think it really becomes an incremental thing, where we watch call volumes, we watch how often we're, we're dependent on our, our mutual aid partners, how many calls we may be missing, or there may be long lead times, and and maybe adjusting those hours and incrementally adding to them.
Council Walker?
What would happen if, uh, how would you operate it if I said that all we could give you is seventy-five thousand?
So, what we would do is, um, continue out this fiscal year at the forty hours, but before July first, we would take the, whatever we had for the total allocation, figure out how many hours that is a week, and then prioritize those hours within a week period. I don't know. It may mean that that becomes, uh, three days a week instead of four, or something like that. I don't know exactly what that would look like, Councilor Walker. What, what we would do is take the allocation, um, divide it out among, among the weeks, and then try to find in our call volumes where those peaks and valleys were to staff during those times.
Just because this is, this is one of them crazy years. I think that we're all looking to, you know, cut budgets and, and try to come in here with a decent tax increase for our taxpayers, as well as us up here. Uh, I think I would be looking personally to lower that and see how you would make it for the rest of this year.
Mr. Mayor, if I'll, question to, um, if it was reduced to a certain amount, would you also expect that your revenue would be reduced proportionally?
Yes, I would. It, it would be hard for me to exact, until I looked at the hours in which we were there, and how many call, to exactly tell you what that might be. I've not done that analysis, but there would be a reduction in revenue, because it'd be less CMS calls that we would be able to capture, yes.
Can you get us more numbers, so that, that way, if, you know, have it for discussion, but depending on what your numbers are, then that way, have a more definitive, hey, what's the projected income we're looking at, and then that way, we have a more informed decision?
I'd be happy to. And is that the number that maybe, you said, Councilor Walker say seventy-five thousand? I, I can do a series of them. I could do a couple, but I'll, I'll start with that one and, and, uh, bring some numbers back to you.
Council Walker?
Could you, uh, off the top of your head, tell me what you think you're gonna run over this year in the, in the amount of money we gave you for your budget, meaning overtime more than anything? Do you think you'll be right on the line, or are we gonna be over again?
Right now, I'm trending right on. Um, our big unknowns, we're, where we expect to be for this time of year is if we had an apparatus breakdown or something like that. Um, but I think that we're trending, I know EMS revenue is higher than we budgeted. I'm more than confident that the net cost of the fire service i- is probably going to be, um, under budget, meaning that with the incre-, our, our, if we're, if our expenses are slightly over, it won't be by as much as our revenue is, is above budget. Um.
Um, so to, so to follow up on this, there, there's been, uh, some discussions off and on about, um, additional charges for certain types of call from the fire service. Can you speak to a little bit about what the range of possibilities might be there that would allow us to charge back against insurance for various services that might cover some or all of the differential between the negative revenue that's going to occur, meaning it's going to cost us more for the crew than we're able to bill out?
Correct me if I'm wrong, I believe what you're referring to is a discussion we had during the fees committee, that there are departments that have moved toward a fee-for-service model for fire service, not just EMS delivery of service. This isn't particularly popular in service center communities. One of the big revenue opportunities, or cost offset opportunities, might be a better word, is with motor vehicle collisions and accidents, and it's the ability for the fire department through a third-party billing service to bill for the services that the fire department provides at motor vehicle accidents. So whether it's an extrication, whether it's a hazardous materials cleanup, which is very common, right? We get fuel, oil, battery fluid, battery acid spills, we do that on a regular basis. Our fee structure already includes some of those costs. We've used those for restitution charges and things if we've needed them in the past. So we could, if the council would be interested, maybe at some point, we could do a presentation for you about what a program like that might look like for us to bill some level of fire services of a service center community. Most communities have the most success billing those through insurance companies, because most motor vehicle insurance has some minimum charge that's acceptable for response. And then, you know, that would, if you will, break the glass ceiling and open us up to fee-for-service for fire protection types of things, and allow us to continue to explore other opportunities.
Councilman Cowan?
I'd love to see that, that information, so, if that's something that, if there's time in this budget cycle, it'd be great to know about, if not for the next year?
I also agree with that, as long as we're not going to go after the individual person, because I think that would really put an awful strain on people that live here that don't have very much money already.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to see that, what the types of services might be, what the fees might be, what other communities are doing. When these fees are being applied, you know, by type of call, or, you know, whether they're non-residents or residents. So I think that would be interesting to see, right? It's, the, it seems like with the trend we've had, the EMS responses don't pay for themselves, and we're going to continue to push over time the number of hours that it makes sense to staff this ambulance. So if there's possibilities to offset the net negative revenue from those responses with something else, I think that would be helpful. Councilwoman White?
Yeah, I'd look at this as, like you say, with imprudent hiking. There are people that go up in the White Mountains, they decide they're going to climb Mount Washington in a blizzard, and then they pay for the extrication, because they were not prudent. I was in a rear-end collision on Minon Avenue. We were able to drive away, the poor person that was sandwiched in between us and the imprudent driver had to be towed away. And there was probably some cleanup that the fire department had to do. I would say that the person that was driving imprudently in weather like we have today, and slammed into a couple of other cars, should pay for that. I have no problem with that.
So what's the sense of the council, since we don't have a number, move the 135,500 onto the budget now? With an understanding we'll discuss this further about what the number should be, and if there's any potential for offsetting revenue?
I support that, yeah, as a place for starting our discussion.
Yeah, I agree, with the information, if the chief can give us the information, that'd be very helpful for me.
Yeah, okay, so the next item's going to take a bit of, a bit of explanation here. So this item for homeless services is on the sheet at $400,000. So a couple of things to understand. First, the city is not appropriating any money for homeless services in our budget at this point, this fiscal year at all. The 400,000 arose basically from the requests from Cadence Kitchen for operational money for the emergency shelter in Lewiston. So you'll recall, they got, the city of Lewiston did a RFP, selected a vendor to operate the shelter, which was Cadence Kitchen, they had the folks that are running the warming center this winter, and they ran it the prior winter. They received $2.5 million in capital money from Maine Housing, basically to stand a shelter up, but it's not operational money. So they had made these requests to Anderson County, Lewiston, and to Auburn for 400,000, which even if all of that was funded, would not cover the operational cost of the shelter, right? It cost about $102 per night, per bed in Maine on average for shelter bed. State funding is $7 a night. And for those people, for a limited period of time where there's GA money, that's 44 bucks a night. So there, so, the city manager and I, after we reviewed the request from Cadence Kitchen, city manager sent a letter to them, because as you'll see in your packet, there really isn't enough information in there for us to make a decision to appropriate money on that. So that's why this made it into this line, is that this would be nonspecific. There's clearly insufficient information available right now about the shelter and the forward-looking cost. But a, there's been discussion by the council over the last year or so about if there was an emergency shelter participating with Lewiston in operational cost. Secondly, we should realize that there's going to be some issues around emergency warming centers next winter. The current plan, as you'll see in here, for this emergency shelter is 41 beds. They're running 80, 90 people a night at the warming center. So if they turn that facility into an emergency shelter, there's going to be 40, 50 people that aren't going to be in there that will be back to where we were a couple of years ago. So the idea of whatever amount that we want to put in this line would, at this point, be generic for homeless services, and we would have to make, as more information came available, understand what money, if any, we want to use towards the emergency shelter or potentially warming center expenses next winter. So questions, comments about this item? Councilwoman White?
It seems like this one is riddled with questions about federal funding, because my understanding is that shelters, the big shelters that have been in place, like in Bangor and Portland, receive a lot of federal funding, which may now be up in the air, which seems completely illogical to me, but that's the environment we're in, so I don't even know how that plays into this, but it's certainly concerning.
So to clarify, unless they receive some specific grant for some specific program, there is no federal money through HUD available to operate emergency shelters. The only, there is state money, like I said, right now, there's bills in front of the legislature to amend this. In the current situation, it seems unlikely that they're going to have money on the appropriations table for this. They get $7 a night. And like I said, you could get, depending on how long the person's there, you can get GA housing, and the current rate's $44 a night. So most of the shelters in Maine operate on some type of budgeted money and philanthropy. And having been in a meeting where all the executive directors of these shelters were present a few months ago, I would say that most of them, half or more of their operating cost is through foundation grants or donations and those types of things. Councilman Walker?
Yeah, thank you. I would like to suggest that for talking points, that we only fund 100,000 at this point, and we can, I think, talk about and discuss it more as we go.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Plaugh?
I'm fine with that number. I guess at this point, I do want to kind of express my, obviously, it's important that we help financially contribute to this issue. $400,000 to a plan where there's a lot of question marks, I think scares me a little bit. I also want to acknowledge what we've already done as a council and as a community to address this issue. We've got, I understand it's not an emergency shelter, but we, as a council, have chosen to invest into Mill Street, which while not a shelter, is still an asset that will help this issue. So I'm not cold-hearted, I'm not, I would love to give millions of dollars to this issue, but we can't. Money doesn't grow on trees, and I want to acknowledge what we've already done. I'm okay with 100, I was actually going to say even lower. I'd like, I'm curious what the costs of emergency warming shelters may be in the future. To me, that is, I mean, we're talking about the difference between life and death in those moments. So to me, that's where dollars should be allocated. So I agree with Councilor Walker's number, personally, I was going to go a little lower.
Answer the question, it's 200,000 and change, you remember, 239? 239 sticks in my mind, that's the cost. It was for five months? I think it was for five months, seven days a week, it was $239,000. To operate the warming center from 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM with one meal.
In Auburn, on Auburn taxpayer money, or this is a concept where you'd have two cities sharing this?
So, yeah, to clarify that, so the, not this winter, the prior winter, we allocated city money, initially allocated 90,000, but ended up being 60,000 or 60,000 something.
It was 63,900.
How much?
We ended up spending 63,900 on that, we allocated 68,500.
Yeah, okay, so 68,500, we spent 63,900, and that was for 10 weeks, right? Because it started in the middle of winter, that was for 10 weeks, and we split the cost 50/50 with the city of Lewiston. This year, Maine Housing, Cadence Kitchen received a grant from Maine Housing for the 239 to run the warming center this winter. But I believe it was five months.
From November to April.
Yeah, thank you, from November to April. So we don't know for certain, we certainly don't know for certain, and there isn't enough information to know what the actual plan is at the emergency shelter, or what's going to happen for warming center, right? But if we had to run a warming center in Auburn, you're going to have to hire people to run it. You're not going to be able to, you know, the drop-in center works on volunteers, but it's Wednesdays and Saturday mornings. You're not going to get volunteers to staff someplace seven days a week, 12 hours a day. And so I would not expect it to be significantly different than the cost they're incurring this year in the joint center in Lewiston. Councilwoman White?
Thank you, yeah. I also heard recently, because before, I know the good counselor who's not here, Belinda, is, that asked questions about transportation, because there was unhoused Auburn citizens on our side, and then there was discussion about, comments about the funding and going to pick up people in Kennedy Park, but not coming the two miles, give or take, to come pick up unhoused citizens in Auburn and Bonnie Park that were here. And that's a long distance to go, and my understanding recently from, was that we started transporting people from the city to the homeless, to the Cadence Kitchen facility. And so I would like to at least see what that cost is. I under, they're going to, they're going to stop that, that process is going to, because they're, they're going to be, the warming place is going to be stopping here soon. But I mean, that cost, if it comes back up again, you know, as the transportation, that costs the city some money. But it's services that were needed because, to help people get to where they're going, because people are, those that are down in New Auburn can see the amount of traffic that people are walking back and forth. I'm definitely open to discussion of that, of some money in homeless services. To what that number is, I don't know. And my concern was, I see this on the city administration supplement budget, but I also see, and then there's the Cadence Kitchen request, but then there's also, when you look down through on the other side, know the skipping ahead, and then non-municipal supplement, and then there's Cadence Kitchen, so now are we going to allocate $800,000? Which was a concern, because you see two different ones. And so I know that it started off with Cadence Kitchen, and then now there's clarification upon that. So I just want to make it so it's clear to the public, because the public is going to see this. And they're going to see two separate fundings for homeless, and that, and I think the clarification is definitely needed to the public, because it's going to seem like we're giving 800,000. In regards to overall homeless services.
Right, so you're correct, that the, there is no intention to double that. The request came from Cadence Kitchen, and there isn't sufficient information to appropriate money directly to identify it to go to Cadence Kitchen. So basically, the 400,000 that you see in the administration supplemental consideration sheet, moves that 400,000 from the non-municipal onto that. I would like to clarify, there is, there is still no transportation from Auburn to the warming center. The only transportation that is going on is on Wednesday and Saturday mornings, between 7:30 and 8:00, the city picks up people as they're discharged from the warming center and brings them over to the drop-in center. And we're using, the council will recall that we replaced one of the vans for parks and rec with a new van, and we kept the old van for overflow, mostly for youth activities in the summertime. So we're using that overflow van, and we're using current staff that's working on Wednesday and Saturday to do the pickup. What happens is they come by, they pick up a volunteer that knows all these folks from the drop-in center, they make a few trips back and forth. We might be, we might be putting on 40 miles in a week, maybe, something like that. A very, very minimal amount of mileage. We bring them over, that's especially important on Saturday, because there are no other services in Lewiston, Auburn on Saturday, other than the drop-in center. Wednesday, we're transporting fewer people, because Trinity's open, and a lot of the folks that are typically in Lewiston, they just take the Cadence Kitchen van down to Kennedy Park, but basically they're there to go into Trinity. So, you know, Council Gary still had the concerns about, you know, if there's a warming center that's shared or emergency shelter that's shared in Lewiston, what about transportation? We haven't addressed that. We've only addressed this one piece, basically, because we couldn't get the folks at Cadence Kitchen, instead of making every trip to Kennedy Park to swing over to Auburn, so we're doing that ourselves. So other thoughts on this, Councilor Cowan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I definitely wanted to move an amount over. I would advocate that we, I mean, again, this is for discussion. I would move the 400,000 over in case we need to determine whether or not we're supporting a warming shelter or the emergency shelter, knowing that we can go down. I'd hate to put something in there and then kind of, if we then restricted ourselves to something we couldn't... something we couldn't actually fully fund. But if others want to have it be a smaller amount to start with, I would advocate something like 250, then, to make sure we're above and can come down.
To be honest, personally, I think the number is, personally, I think 400 is too high, but as far as what we push forward, I think the number's immaterial. We've agreed that we want to talk about it further, so if we push over 400, but I'm comfortable at 100, then that's the conversation we'll be having in seven days. So, I'm fine pushing any number forward. It sounds like this is something we want to talk about further.
Yeah, so, personally, I think the answer is in there in the middle, right? I don't think that, I think that if the council were determined that they want to participate in helping to fund the operational cost of the emergency shelter, it should be on a proportional basis, right? And so, I don't think that's going to reach 400,000. I would be more supportive of putting in, you know, 275 or something like that, and then having the discussion, because, look, whatever, you could put a million dollars in this line, it'll get spent on essential services that are needed, it's, you know, but we don't have a million dollars to put into this. I think if we're sort of basing this on what we started with of saying, okay, this is what they asked for for emergency shelter, I don't, I don't see that, you know, could they use 400,000? Sure, but I'm not sure that if you get through the discussion, that's what we would agree to. So, I would be more inclined to do what Counsel Cowan was talking about, maybe move 275,000 over, then have the discussion, and not, not just put 400,000 in there now. And that should be, that would be sufficient, if what we end up having to do is run a warming center, that would be sufficient to fund that. Counsel Wyman?
I'm okay with the 275,000. It occurred to me when we were talking about Maine Housing getting funding to Cadence Kitchen this year, that changes the dynamic for me, because that's a state agency, and they're supporting a population which is migratory. So, I think there should have been more accommodation to people on our side of the river, in terms of transportation, for example. And I mean, it's always going to be a negotiation, it's been a fight for years. I mean, we, for years and years and years, neither city addressed the issue, and I was part of that committee, and I finally quit the committee, because I was so frustrated, because neither city was doing anything about it, and the reason they didn't want to do anything about it was because of who's going to pay and how much are they going to pay? It's really hard to calculate that stuff. So, I think if we put in 275, that's okay, because it's, we don't know what it's going to be, but we're knowing that there's an issue there, and we're trying to plan for that.
Everybody okay with that? We'll move it in and have the discussion?
I mean, I think I'm maybe closer to Leroy on this one, but I'm happy moving it forward. I just, I think that when we have the discussion, I'm going to be closer to 100, 150 than 275. But I'm fine moving 275 forward, and we talk about it in seven days.
Sure.
I just want to be clear today where I stand.
Mm-hmm, that's fine.
I don't know if there's cost calculations that are meaningful for this particular conversation, but knowing that in some cases, when we're talking about investments in warming shelters, where you have, you're building relationships, you're getting the chances of someone then moving on to getting support and moving out of homeless, so that's taking us off, you know, so that, that's an important thing to consider. But also, I wonder, you know, in future discussions, Manager Croll, you might have some thoughts about what the impact would be on our police service or our EMS services, if there is, you know, if we cut out completely and had to ratchet it back here, are we really saving all that money, or are we having to spend it on people who are less supported and therefore having more challenges, and in camps and things like that, so.
Anything further on this? Counsel Wyman?
Yeah, I'm always open for discussion. I probably think that 275 is too high, probably somewhere, I'm down around 100, but that doesn't mean I'm going to go with 100. I mean, I could, you know, I want to see more information, especially because we're always doing, we're opening up for warming, warming shelters, because when the storms are bad, and doing that, I know we've talked about previously, you know, where exactly in the past is that funding coming from? So, I mean, because I don't remember, off the top of my head, I just don't remember ever seeing it, something like this, for the, for, like, open it for the afternoon or whatever, because we're going to have a rough winter. So, for people that need to get out and get a warm place to go, rough storm. So, you know, now, now it's potentially, those are all going to be in, you know, looking at this number, so it's...
This number doesn't include that at all. If you recall, the council recently updated the policy, and the current policy is only to open during the daytime on days that meet certain weather conditions, in which there are no other services available. So, we opened once this year. That was on a Sunday. Their local church over in Lewiston started providing some services on Sunday, when the weather was bad, so we no longer opened as we went along. So, that isn't even included in this. So, the, you know, just fine, we can have more discussion. I guess what I would say, the counselors that are, that are looking for numbers like 50,000 or 100,000, you should be prepared to come in and say exactly what that is buying, right? Because I'm happy to give you the numbers about what it takes to run a warming center. I'm happy to give you the numbers to, what it's going to take to run an emergency shelter, and, you know, 50 or 100,000 doesn't come anywhere as close to doing either one of those things.
Didn't we just hear that 100,000 would get us 50% of a 10-week? Wasn't 239,000 the price for the 10-week Cadence Kitchen?
No, no, no.
No.
239,000 is what it costs to run the warming center in Lewiston this winter for the five-month period, for five months. And the, the previous year, they ran out of money. They raised a bunch of money, because it was an emergency, and the whole thing started in the middle of the winter. So, if you're going to run a warming center, it's going to cost you somewhere in that neighborhood of 200, 250,000 to run a warming center, seven nights a week. You know, one of the challenges I think Cadence Kitchen has had is, you can't get volunteers to staff this, well, you know, 8 o'clock at night, 8:00 in the morning, seven days a week, and you have to have people that you're paying to come do this. Counsel Wyman?
Thank you. So, just my question, my question is, so, how long ago has Auburn had an emergency warming shelter? Like, how, like, five years ago was there one?
Auburn?
Or 10 years? Because now, all of a sudden, like, you said that if we're going to come back here and we're going to cut this to zero or 100, then what's the cost to do it? I'm just, I'm just trying to remember in the past, when, how, like, three years ago, four years ago, did Auburn have one at all? Or is this a new thing that's becoming now, that wasn't always five, 10 years ago, that did Auburn ever fund? I'm just trying to look at historically, how does Auburn do? And then now, we're looking at, because now the taxpayer is going to look at this. I understand the homeless side of it, and the compassion side of it, but I'm also looking at it, and the cost of it, and what did Auburn do a number of years ago, and what, if, because if we didn't have something five, 10 years ago, than we're doing now, then, you know, I'm just trying to look at both sides of it.
Sure.
And so, if I don't want to, if I don't want to fund it, I don't, because we've got other things, like a senior tax reimbursement program. So, if you cut from this, you're going to cut from that, which, once we get into these discussions. So, I just want to make sure I have accurate information, so that when the taxpayer wants to ask me a question, I have information to go back to them and say, hey, this is, it's, this will, this will add to the budget, and then it's going to, then there's, there's potential, I don't know what it's going to work out to, that will taxpayers' money, their taxes go up?
Sure.
And then, we've already had them come to us, to counselors, myself, asking, why did our taxes go up? And then we have to explain why.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just want to make sure I have all kinds of information, so I say, hey, you know, am I looking at, I don't want to approve any of this, because it's going to add, and what is it going to eventually add on the other side for taxes? Is the taxes going to go up? Is it going to go down if I add or remove stuff? So, that's what, I'm just trying to figure that out and that information, so, thank you.
So, Auburn has never had a warming, overnight warming center. They've always done this in conjunction with Lewiston. This year, it's being done out on Lincoln Street by Cadence Kitchen. The previous year, it was, for the 10 weeks, no one started one that winter. It wasn't until after the election that both councils got together and funded it, and it was at the church, which is no longer available on Main Street in Lewiston. Cadence Kitchen ran it. The year before that was the first year it was run that I'm aware of, and that was run by Immigrant Resource Center at the same church in Lewiston. I think that the same need wasn't there five or 10 years ago, because there are literally hundreds of homeless people in Lewiston and Auburn. And that situation didn't exist. There might have been a few homeless people, but that situation didn't exist five or 10 years ago. And, you know, I look at it, this, I think people have empathy for those that are out on the street. I think that there's other factors to this. This is an economic development issue. If you have 10 encampments and people sleeping in doorways and on the street, when we're trying to do economic development, we're trying to sell the city. That is not going to help you in those circumstances. This cost offsets, as I think Counsel Cowan or someone mentioned, you know, having, if these folks are on the street, you're going to have more EMS, and you're going to have more fire and police calls to handle these calls for service. So, my only point was, when we get to this discussion, if, if people are saying, let's put 50,000 into it, or 100,000 into it, that doesn't buy you all of anything. So, I'm just saying, counselors should be prepared, if those are the types of numbers that you're talking about, what it is you think you're funding and at what part? Because that's going to be important for people to understand as we debate this.
Go ahead. I was just going to say, the, related to the increase in the need, in addition to those that are living on the street, you know, the estimated 300 or so is the number of people who've been served in a year, serviced, provided care by, you know, our navigators that go out with, with our police. In addition to that is the dramatic increase in the number of children in our school department who are homeless or at risk of being homeless. It went from 58 to over 240 in five years. And so, that's where, you know, I think as we think about that, that, that program, it's easier to identify them, so that kind of growth is probably what we're seeing nationally. The estimates is a 39% increase in families that are becoming homeless. You know, so I think, it is, as Mayor Harmon said, it wasn't anywhere close to the same issue five years ago as we're seeing now, and so, I think that's just something we have to take into account when we're having this discussion, is if, if we go into a recession, we're not going to see a decrease. You know, there's not, there's an expectation that this year's McKinney-Vento children in the school department is going to be even higher than the 240 from last year. So, you know, and that group, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe McKinney-Vento is largely funded from the federal government, so if there are cuts in that, what are we going to, we may have an additional group of people that need extra help. So, that, you know, I think that's just another piece for us to be thinking about as we're looking at this. It's, you know, because those are, those are the most helpless people in our, in our communities, right? Our elderly living alone, and our children that need, need the support, and, and making sure they can get to school and have the resources. And so, I think, however we work on this, we, that's just another piece that we have to think about. There may be a decrease in funding from that, that we then have to figure out, if at all we can supplement some.
I think you're right about all of that, but I don't think this 400,000, or if we cut it down to 100,000, is going to change any of that. And I don't think this money here is targeted towards kids that are sleeping on couches. I think, just listening to what is being said here, we're worried about, are we going to have 275,000 to give to the other city across the bridge to help them out with their problems? We got enough of our own problems, like you're saying right now. School kids, we have a warming center, or a drop-in center, or whatever, that's what we have to worry about right now. Over there, if they know that we're only going to have 100,000, they're going to have to go to work a little bit harder to get the money they need. That's the way I look at it. If we say, we'll put 275 in there, they're listening across the bridge, and we don't make that cut for another three weeks down the road, for instance, they're going to think they got 275 coming. I don't want to put a high number in there, when I know three of us are saying, we're going to be lucky to vote for 100,000. So, I don't want to give anyone false thinking. I prefer to have the 100, we talk about it, and if you can convince the council, when we have a full council, to go to the 275 later, or the 400, or a million, then you win, simple as that. Right now, I think this is a talking point, 100,000, and that's what we should look at, a talking point.
And so, Counsel Walker, what is the 100,000 going to buy us?
100,000, I look at it like this, 100,000 is going to help out the catering kitchen, or whatever we call that, warming shelter. 100,000 is a lot better than 500, and I'm listening to what he might have thought. He might have thought 500 was enough. At least we're at 100,000. That, I would feel really comfortable if someone would give me 100,000 if I needed a million. It would at least be a start, and it will help them. Also, they were given a lot of money this year from the federal government, or the state, whoever gave it, and they went out and hired a lot of people, like you said, they needed to do. They had to hire. That's okay if they want to hire, but next year, maybe they can hire these people, and they'll have to find volunteers to run their show.
Counsel Wyman?
I didn't know if you're going to comment or not, sorry. So, my biggest thing I just hear is, you know, what is the money going to go to? Well, I don't have a sheet here that's telling me, because I'm a numbers guy, what is, in a sense of, I want, I like to see things on paper. So, you say, what are you going to cut? Well, I have nothing in front of me that's going to tell me what this is, if we do this, this is going to cost. If we do this, this is going to cost. So, how can I make an educated guess on what we're going to do, or what you're telling me, what are you going to do? Because right now, I have nothing in front of me, so right now, the number could be zero, because I have no idea, or it could be a million dollars. I don't know. You're just saying, where are you going to cut? How much is it going to cost? What is it going to do? I don't know. I don't have a number in front of me. That's, I'm just asking, Mr. Mayor. And, and so, I just need something to help me make a, an educated decision on how I'm going to do this, and so...
So, listen carefully, and I'll say this, for the third time tonight, third time, if you want to fund a warming center, such as has been done this year, it's going to cost you in the area of 250,000. If you want to have a proportional contribution to what it's going to cost to run the, an emergency shelter, based on, if Lewiston puts 400,000 into this, it's around 267,000, right? That's what this gets you. That's the, that's the two things. What we're saying is, we don't have enough information to say we're going to fund Cadence Kitchen, or we're going to fund a warming center. What we're saying is, this problem's not going away. And if we can, we can say we'll have zero, and we'll have these people all over the streets, you're going to end up, like, in Bitterford, where the tent encampments were all in front of City Hall, on public property, you can't move them, under the Supreme Court case that was heard this, this last year. So, the point is that if you're saying, I'm telling... So the point is that if you're saying, I'm telling you, I can tell you exactly what it costs in the state of Maine per night, per bed for a shelter. I can tell you what the proportional cost is if Lewiston gives the 400,000 based on population, what Auburn's contribution would be. And we can say zero. Right? That's fine. We can tell you what's going to happen if we don't put any money into this. The other point I would make is if you're saying, let's put 50 in or let's put 100 in, what is it that you're buying for that? Because it's going to take on the order of one and a half to 1.6 million dollars. Do the math, 41 beds at $102 a night, 365 days in a year. That's what it's going to take to run an emergency shelter for 41 beds. Nobody's saying they're going to fund the whole thing. Even if Lewiston and Auburn put money into this, they're going to be having to find grants and philanthropy for probably a million dollars to keep the thing open. What I'm saying is I don't see a clear path for this emergency shelter. And if that doesn't happen, we're going to need to have a warming center because we cannot be putting these folks out in the middle of the winter in 10 degree weather, you know, sleeping in a doorway with a blanket over them.
I think it's a fair ask. I'm less concerned about what number we push forward today. I appreciate Council Walker's point on the optics of a number versus another number. That's fine. I'm prepared to come here in seven days and have a discussion about whether this should be 100,000 or 275. I don't care what we push forward today. I think the call to say, what would we do with that money? Very fair. You know, for example, I think what the mayor's asking is if I come back next week and say, I want to do 100,000, then I need to couple that by saying, I want to do 100,000. And my understanding is this would cover 50% of the cost of a three-month shelter. Or I'm sorry, a three-month warming hut. So I think that's what's being asked of us. I agree, I don't have the dollars and cents, but I think we have a general sense of what it would cost. Quarter million dollars, five months, warming center. That's the fourth time. But so that's my understanding. I feel comfortable coming back here in seven days, having that discussion. I don't care what number we push forward. I understand everybody's points. We're going to talk about this again, I think, in seven days.
Thank you for that. I, I'm fine when moving this to discussion. I just, until this point, you know, saw the two different things. I have no numbers on what something's going to cost and I would just like to see something written down. Like we're going to get reports from the chief or just some idea that's going to give me an idea to help me make an informed decision. That's all I'm trying to get to because before that moment I saw 800,000. Now I see 400,000. Now we get the clarification and now all of a sudden now I'm getting some numbers, which I appreciate that on some options or some directions. And so it's just happening all within the last 20 minutes. So if I have those numbers, somebody provides them written down that gives us, they're not exact. I understand that they're rough numbers. They may be shared costs or whatever, but that just helps me when we get to discussion point, which I'm open to discussion. Thank you.
I'm not sure if you looked, but in your packet you do have a breakdown from Cadence Kitchen on what they were proposing for the 400. So that has a lot of the data that the mayor was sharing. Some of that is kind of in that document. So you might want to look at that as just their original request was 400,000 from Auburn, 400 from Lewiston, 400 from the county. Then they also broke out what some of their costs would be for how many beds. So you can get some background based on their proposal. That's separate from what we've been discussing to some extent because it's also now that's for the full-time shelter compared to a warming, a warming shelter for a limited amount of months. But at least you can get a little bit of data in the packet that they provide.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I knew there was information in there, looked through some of it. But some of the other options besides the Cadence Kitchen, just wanted to get numbers on that because that was the other options if we're not going to give Cadence Kitchen the 400,000.
Keep in mind, nobody else is coming forward and offering a program that's other than that. So we don't have anything else to provide you because we don't have another organization saying, well, instead of doing that Cadence Kitchen, why don't you do a temporary warming center for this much money? That doesn't exist. What we have is, based on what the mayor just said, how much it would cost per night, per bed for those X amount of months. That's really all we have because we don't have, that's so hypothetical because there's not even a location. There's not even, you know, we haven't identified any of that. So when you're really looking at numbers, it's, could you do something? Yes. Could you do it for this? Is what you'd really be needing to look at for another provider because there's no other providers on the table.
So we could allocate money to this, and I know it's discussion, but we might not be able to put anywhere because there's nobody to operate it possibly.
That's where you're having, if you put that money, that's where you're having that next conversation. This is what we're allocating. What does that look like? How can that proceed? Or how can you apply this amount? As the mayor said, if you're using it based on a per capita, you could say, okay, based on what was requested for Lewiston, here's our per capita match that we believe is a fair amount for us to contribute.
Thank you.
Council Walker.
What I'm looking at with this budget is the very end, down, way down the road. I don't want to see 20 of our senior citizens on the street because we didn't cut this budget. This budget's too high. It's probably three to four million dollars too high. And these are some of the numbers that we're going to have to cut. Now, a lot of people don't like that, but you know, I don't, I don't feel that we have to give them any money over there if we're going to keep 20 people in Auburn in their house. And that's how I look at it. The taxpayer is paying this bill, no matter how we look at it. The taxpayer is the one that's going to take the hit on the chin again in '26. In '27, it'll probably be even another big hit on the chin. We can't afford to take care of these people and people have to understand that at some point. I don't want to see my son someday out on the street and you're not here to take care of him. But we can't keep going down this road. We're going to have many of our own people on the street besides the ones we got now that have to learn to live on the street or never been on the street. I don't want to see that. So I'm going to fight tooth and nail to cut these kind of budgets because they're new. They're new to us. They're new to the whole state. Let somebody else take care of that $400,000. If it's so important, let somebody else do it.
I think that's where having some numbers of what the other, what's the other side of that equation? If you don't do anything, if we, if we as a municipality don't provide any money towards a warming center, which again helps people get connected to services that eventually can get them off the streets. How much does that cost us in our other emergency services? And you know, that's, that's the other piece on that is what kind of strains are putting on to our police and our EMS services if these people are, what kind of strain is that putting on those who have private property? Because these people are camping in their private property. So I think it's, it's not, I agree, it's a new, it's a new cost. It's a new problem at this magnitude as well, so.
Well, it's already a huge strain. So, I mean, on police services currently and, you know, we've had those conversations with the chief, police chief. It's already a huge strain. So there's already, it would be hard to quantify. I just want to, I want to make sure, you know, for me coming in with any crystal ball to tell you that if you don't do this, it'll cost you this. I really won't have that. But what I can tell you is what it's currently costing. And we can do some comparisons on the types of calls we're getting now compared to what we received even three years ago, night and day on the call volume issues. And certainly EMS issues. We can, we can provide some of that data. But it's already putting a strain on the system.
Thanks.
Again, that's, that's part of what we were doing here in Auburn though, to try to cut some of these things backwards or slow them down. That's why we opened up a drop-in center. We got people that are coming in there. Eventually we're going to have all different offices in there that are going to help these people or get them to another help line. I'm not sure of all of, you know, their qualifications, but, you know, listening to Glenn when he said, we're going to have this office for this and office for that. We're going to, we're going to help these people. It may take time to help them. But if we need $400,000 to put into that place after we've put in how much at this point? We bought the place for a million. We put almost a million to make the repairs and we're falling behind on repairs. That might be December by the time the kitchen nets up and running. We don't know where we are at that point. And the federal money that we are holding in our hand, maybe that's not even going to be there. So I want to take care of Auburn before I worry about taking care of somebody's bed across the river.
I think that's a good point, Council Walker. Don't overlook the fact of what you have done as a council towards the resource drop-in, the resource community center, right? That's, you know, you're, you're looking at, you know, two plus million dollars currently that the city has invested resources to address some of these issues as well as some of what you've done with our PSY workers that are out with police and fire. You've taken several steps. Don't dismiss that. And I think, you know, and if you'd like, as we move forward in this conversation, compiling that data that as a summary sheet for you, I think will be important. It's going to be important for you to see some of the work that you have done.
Yeah, I agree 150% with that, Council Walker. You're spot on. 121 Mill Street is a huge resource that we should be very proud of.
Anything further on this item? Okay, let's, let's skip down to, I think it's easier to talk about them in the reverse order. So the organic waste drop site collection. So in the, in the solid waste bids, there is a bidder to do organic waste pickup for composting. The drop site locations are the fixed site like the two, you know, we have two today. We've got South Main Street Fire Station, we've got Grace Lawn Road. But this would include city facilities like the schools, I think, senior center, places that would generate food waste. The 26400 is the cost for them, for the vendor to come to those sites to pick the waste up. And, you know, the business case for this is to the extent that we can remove organic waste out of the waste stream, it's beneficial for both our ability to increase the dump at the tipping fees at main waste of energy, right? Because this stuff, A, heavy and B, doesn't, it makes the electricity generation less efficient. So this one, the 264 is the bid price for the fixed location pickups. We can talk about this one. The next one we'll talk about separately has to do with curbside. Yeah, thank you. Curbside collection. I knew there was a word for that. Yeah, okay. So any, any questions or comments on this one? Council Pla.
Yes, and I can't not talk about both of them at the same time because I.
Well, if you want to talk about, let me.
Can I pose my question, then you can move on?
Yeah, would you want me to explain what the other one is?
Not really. I mean, I think I know what it is. Garbage to Garden or whatever, you know, some system where people get buckets and they get to put their stuff out and get compost back in return. My question is simple. I totally buy into this. I support $26,000 and that I think it can save us $26,000 on the backend. So going to curbside, my only question would be, is if every household has the opportunity to partake in this, do we predict that we will see increased savings? Will, listen, if we do, if, I'm going to go to Grace Lawn. Ben's going to go to Grace Lawn because we want to get rid of our food. Are you really going to get that much more buy-in if it's curbside? If the answer is yes, if there's $81,000 of additional decrease in tipping fees, maybe there's an argument for that. I'm skeptical. I'd like to start with the fewer sites, 26,000 personally, but I'd like to hear what other people think.
Yeah, so if we're going to talk about both of them at the same time, let me explain the curbside. So the bid for curbside is a subscription service. 10 bucks per month, right? If I got the right number, $10 per month. People subscribe, the vendor comes by, they pick your bucket up once a week. They take your, dump it, take it off for composting. That's a subscription service. The 107,444 Assistant City Manager can give us the number. I don't remember the number, but it's basically a one-year offset of the subscription service to get people to adopt this. I don't know that there's any quantifiable revenue increase on the other side of that. But you could tell us what the number is.
So the proposal for the 107,000 buys, it's actually the first 500 residents that would sign up for the program. That would be the one-year subscription fee for 500 residents plus the $25 bucket, that, you know, kit they call it that you get. That's what that essentially adds some advertising cost, but that's, that's essentially the 107,000. So as the mayor said, it's $9.99 or $10 a month for anyone to do this. So that's just really was the recommendation coming from Garbage to Garden who does this that in order to gain traction or gain that popularity, it helps to have some kind of, I guess, seed, you know, funding to go towards it and get people on board with it. The, I would just say that if the council decided not to go with that option, we would need to discuss how to, what's the minimum for the residents, for them to be able to start the curbside program? The drop site locations would be no problem. That would be something that we would start right away. There's no need for a minimum. But obviously if only five residents were, if there was no funding coming from the city and say five residents say they want to do it, that's not enough of a business for them to be able to start collecting. So what that number is, we started to discuss it a little bit. I think it's somewhere around 500 that they would need at a minimum to make sense of that. So that's just, just to explain that it would not start a curbside if we, even if they, you know, the subscription-based program were to go out, it would require some level of resident participation for them to be able to pick that up.
Well, I appreciate that. That makes my feelings even more cemented in what I thought. I just, I don't think the city should be paying to hit a threshold. It's like if we're going to try this, baby steps. Let's get these sites locally set up. Let's educate people. Let's get them heading over. But I, I don't, it doesn't feel right to have to shell out money to hit a minimum to start a service. It feels weird.
Yeah, so I agree with that. You've got to remember this is a one-time thing too. So if you, you have to really think about if you subsidize 500 people so that they'll do curbside, what happens at the end of the first year? Because you're going to have a drop-off from some of those people aren't going to do it if they're not, if it's not subsidized. So Council Wyeth.
Thanks. I would like to see the drop site collection. I think that's great. And I think it would be great for people who don't compost. I compost. I probably get, I have one of those big bins. I think I bought it from the city for like 20 bucks several years ago. I have a little container under my kitchen sink. I probably move a gallon a week out there. And by the time I'm done through the winter composting, I've got enough for the garden for the, for the year. And then my wife uses it in flower gardens and all that. So it's very self-sustaining just doing it at home. But I think the other thing about setting up the site or a couple of sites to collect it is it might, if it's very successful, it might attract a private business to actually do this on their own. I think this happens in Portland. I believe there's a company that does it down there.
That's who the bidder is.
Yeah, maybe they just do it on their own up here if they saw there was enough interest, you know, without participation from the city. I don't know.
So just to be clear, in the bid, the company is the same ones that's in Portland. It's, what's the name of it?
Garbage to Gardens.
Garbage to Gardens, thank you. And they are willing to do this, right? This is the cost for the drop site. Then they'll do subscription. They, as Assistant City Manager said, they need a certain level of subscription to make it worthwhile to come up and do this. So I think that that's going to be the question, right? I think, you know, I don't, look, if we had unlimited money, this would be great to do to try to get this thing kicked off. But I don't think subsidizing this for the first year, I think it's, a lot of them are going to fall off afterwards. We ought to see, we've had lots of comments from people wanting this. Let's see what happens and see how many subscriptions that they get.
Those people who are really excited about it and may not get their subscription this year, let's get them on the bandwagon of educating their neighbors to visit our sites and throw away their food, you know, and help, it helps save MWA, or it's not called MWA anymore, but helps it, helps it, is it still MWA? And save MWA, you know, like MWA doesn't need to be burning food, you know? Nobody needs to be burning food.
Yeah, and if there aren't enough subscriptions, if we fund the drop sites, they can still go drop this off, right? I mean, it's, we got lots of people. I mean, it's, we got lots of people, as you've probably seen, still take their recycling to Grace Lawn, even though it could get picked up every other week, curbside.
Yeah, I'm...
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm excited about this. Ever since the, the, the committee came back and my comments of having organic waste, very happy to see this in there as drop sites, so I'm, I'm in favor of the drop sites. Um, I agree with your, all your comments about the, you know, subsidizing this program to see, I would, another thing probably that we could do is at these drop sites, if there could be signs that are made, say, hey, we need to get a threshold of whatever it is. If they can, yeah, if they can put their email in somewhere, I don't know if it's something we do, or can work with Garbage to Gardens that, you know, put their email in, and once they, once we get so many people that are, um, on board, I, I would definitely sign up for this service. Um, but I understand the threshold, but, you know, hey, enough people sign up, then an email will get sent out to everybody and say, hey, we've reached the number that we needed, and then you can sign up for it. I don't know if that's something we can do, or, you know, they can do, but at least have some sort of discussion on, at least on that, to gain interest on it. But I'm, I'm in favor with the twenty-six four, not really with the one oh-seven, but at least the, um, a, a way of getting the information out to growing that number.
I, I think it's, it's fairly simple for us to be able to do some kind of registration or, or tracking that. Uh, we, we spoke with Garbage to Gardens, but I think I've also had conversations with our Communications Director just about a promotion opportunity to, to promote that and get that information back. So, to answer your question, it's doable.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I like the drop-off site. I think that, you know, we, we've had small ones, but I think having something better and a little more education about it would work really well. The other one, I think the signup is great, but I think if people really want their curb to curb, they pay upfront when they sign up. We don't have to have a budget. That will go into it, whatever account you have. They've paid their bill, you pay it out, and it's over. I think that's the way we should work with it.
Yeah, the, uh, my understanding, and I'll clarify this with Garbage to Garden, but the, um, the, we can work again and help with the signup to gather interest and, and help the promotion, but I believe the signup is actually directly with, so residents will just register directly with, like you would any other subscription that you maybe pay for. Um, you pay right directly to Garbage to Garden for that going forward. So, to your point, Council Walker, would actually be no budget or impact on, on the city from that standpoint.
Okay, anything further on this one?
No, I'm in favor of, uh, what my fellow councils have said, I, you know, the twenty-six four and not carry the other over.
Okay, so the, the next item is a senior tax reimbursement program. The, um, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the rough estimate from some analysis that staff did. You remind folks, right, they have to have the age qualified, they have to hit, be family income qualified, they have to have gotten a property tax Fannis credit rebate, and then the way the current ordinance is written, we'd match that up to a thousand dollars, or depending if, if the budgeted amount doesn't cover all of that, it would be distributed proportionally. So, thought, thoughts on this, Council Pla?
Yeah, um...
Pretty, pretty simply, you know, cut this budget item not completely, reduce it, like, well, I think, context of moving this forward, I would say cut it in half, one seventy-five or two hundred. Also, I would consider discussing qualifying as well as the following cap. So, I would low, I know we approved that in our order, I believe, but if we are to lower this amount, I would try to increase the, I would try to keep flat a number of people who could benefit by decreasing the overall amount, upper limit. The, the age, I don't, I just said, I don't even remember.
Yeah, sixty-five, just, just, yeah, so just to be clear, the budgeted amount will change what the cap is, right? Because, so let, I'll just make up an illustrative example. Let's say we budget, um, let's say we get requests for qualifying people, and they can all reach the cap, and that's gonna cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't know, but just assume. Let's say you cut this in half, it would get, um, a portion, uh, it would be pro rata, so people would get five hundred dollars instead of a thousand, because the way the ordinance is written, if the request exceed the budgeted amount, it's proportionally distributed among the qualifying applicants based on the amount of money. And, and not everyone's gonna qualify, right? So, I, I was at a ninety-two-year-old woman's house this week. Uh, she had questions about tax stuff. I checked her tax return. She's got a two thousand dollar property tax Fannis credit. So, if the money covered the whole thing, she'd get a thousand dollars. I was at another person's house the week before. They only had four hundred dollar, um, property tax Fannis credit, so they wouldn't even be eligible for the thousand, right? Under the way the ordinance is written, if there's enough money to cover it, they get the four hundred dollars. If the money that's budgeted, let's say is fifty percent of the qualified applicant, the person that got two thousand would get a thousand, they'd only get five hundred, and the person at a four hundred dollar property tax Fannis credit would only get two hundred. So, it, it's going to self-adjust. I mean, that was a idea that the city manager brought forward that makes a lot of sense because it ties it back to whatever the appropriation is.
Great, well, well-designed. You can ignore my caveats, uh, but I do still, I, I would propose cutting this in half. Um, I guess just to back that up with some context, I, this is a year where I think we have to do that with most line items. I would further say that I, I do feel, uh, in my heart that this population is as, I don't wanna say as vulnerable as our homeless population, but in many cases they are. And in, and I think in all cases, we need to be thinking about this population as much as any other population. And so, if we're here making an argument that we're gonna allocate six figures to homeless services, I think we need to do the same thing to folks who have been tax-paying citizens in this city for ten year, I believe it's ten years. Um, it's, I think it's very important, and I just think, uh, maybe we'll get up to three fifty next year, but let's start a little smaller. Let's see if this program works. Let's iron out the kinks this year, and let's come back next year with another discussion.
Council Walker?
I agree a hundred percent. I think, uh, we could bring it down to a hundred and seventy-five or two hundred and start with that to see where it goes.
Council Whiting?
Yeah, this being the first year, if we decide to do it, um, anything will be appreciated. I mean, I, I sort of hesitate because on the one hand, you're raising taxes to lower taxes for a smaller subset of taxpayers who are needy, and you can justify it, but I think it speaks to reducing the amount just to, you know, ease our way into it and see how it works, and we can study what we get for results, and then, you know, proceed from there and see where we go next year.
Council Con?
And I, I, I agree with that proposal. I also, um, you know, there, there is a, there is a connection between this, the benefits of this program and what we put into homelessness, because we know that elderly are are one of the fastest or the fastest-growing populations. So, to, to Council Walker's earlier comments, it's, it's a real risk if, you know, we wanna be able to try to offset that, that risk for them.
Council Whiting?
Thank you. I, I'm in favor of moving this discussion with that number.
Yeah, a- and I am as well. I've been to a number of people's houses, uh, in the last few months that are elderly, um, on minimal social security, um, and, uh, you know, they're having a, they're having a, a real struggle about, uh, having enough income to cover all of their, their expenses. There's a lot of merit to the point of making sure, um, we understand what's gonna happen, right? If anybody followed the discussion at Lewiston, they pegged theirs at three to four million dollars. Uh, I'm not sure how they got there. Um, you know, ma- maybe we're wrong and maybe they're right, right? But we'll, we won't know unless we're doing something and we get the applications in and see how this works. I, I think, um, I, I know the city manager's the same way. We have trouble getting our head around the, that it would rise to these huge numbers, but we're not gonna find out what's really involved unless we do something this, this year.
Application period's open, so we're collecting applications now. So, we'll, we'll, we'll be able to get you some numbers. You know, we'll give you a check in next week, and we'll let you know how many applications we've received. We still have to vet all those applications to determine if they qualify.
Uh, out of curiosity, the three hundred thou-, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar number, was that based on an assumption that there are three hundred and fifty eligible seniors over the age of X? Have they been there this long?
It, it was, it was an estimate based on, a lot of it was extrapolating off of the senior property tax reimbursement program that happened. Unless you're in multifamily, it never really helped you here in Auburn, but on the applications for that, trying to look at the demographics that we have, and, um, you know, making some assumptions about what level they would have gotten a property tax Fannis credit. So, I, I agree with Council Whiting that, um, a- a- anything that can be done here is a positive thing. I think we'll learn a lot, uh, by going through it one year.
I will say, we've had quite a bit of interest in the program. Staff has been, um, inundated with phone calls and questions about it, and we have, while we haven't counted the number of applications, we've received quite a few already.
That's encouraging. Good.
Uh, okay, so let's move on to non-municipal. I know Andersgagen Historical, the city manager is gonna follow up. There's ten thousand in here, and neither of us could remember if this is, was a one-time thing the prior council had done with grant funding, or if we had been giving money to the Historical Society here.
I think what the, I've been going back through, looking at notes and trying to figure out what we had done. We had allocated twenty-five thousand for LA Arts. I think the thought was that that was actually, um, they had twenty thousand, if you go back a few years ago, they had twenty thousand that was in there. Believe we actually reduced that by five to fifteen, and we added ten to that line item for the Historical Society. That brought us to the twenty-five. Um, however, at some point through other adjustments and changes, I don't think that was ever communicated, and I'll take that, I don't think it was ever communicated to LA Arts that their budget was reduced five, it was more increased by five, because they, the line item, the title on the, on the budget change, never, never changed to, um, from LA Arts to, the plan was to, um, you know, or, uh, community organization, I think is where, where it was originally discussed. And so, that ten thousand was paid out, was paid out of that line item, as well as the twenty-five thousand that was allocated for LA Arts. So, the question now is, do, do you keep LA Arts at, that their twenty-five thousand dollar request? Do you reduce that fifteen, or do you add from the twenty-five, add a ten if you wanna continue with, um, the Andersgagen Historical Society? What we had done was when they came forward, quite a few, I wanna say at least three-plus years ago, the discussion was, uh, they had a bigger request. They were making their move to their new facility. They had a larger request. They were looking at ARPA funds. I had the conversation with them at that time that, that would have been just a, a one-time hit, and that's it. And I think it was around, I wanna guess, maybe fifty thousand, somewhere's in there. And so, what we had discussed was, why don't we work in ten thousand? So, you, you'll always know there's ten thousand coming for operational costs for the Historical Society. That's to do upgrades to, um, the night house here in, in Auburn, as well as, at the time, they were still keeping an annex space available at, um, at the county building. So, um, so that's where that went. So, the ten thousand is a request, and they, they did receive that last year. However, it was not, it was, that line item is gonna go over this year, is what's gonna end up happening, cause it was already allocated.
Yeah, the old school tool up in...
The old school, sorry, on West Auburn Road, yes.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, if to net this out to a current services budget, we would need to reduce LA Arts from twenty-five to fifteen?
That's correct.
So...
I'll, I'll be the first one to say, I'm okay doing that. I, I know at the LA Arts Organization, I, again, this is a tough year, and we need to make tough decisions. I, personally, I would strike this ten thousand dollar line item. I would take the twenty-five that's budgeted. I would give ten to the Historical Society, fifteen to LA Arts, and I would say to LA Arts, we're very sorry, but this year, you're gonna have to find five thousand dollars more in private funding, which I know they can do. It's not what they wanna hear. It's not what I wanna say, but this is the reality we're sitting in today.
Other comments on this, Council Con?
I think I'd go a step further and say, if we're gonna reduce LA Arts in, in common, I would reduce the, the amount we end up giving to the Historical Society. Uh, again, it's, it's a tough year, and, and, you know, I don't think that they're any more deserving than LA Arts. You know, I would try to see if we're gonna be doing reductions, or doing reductions across the board.
Just to clarify, you, they had done, we had, the council had done the reductions, it just wasn't passed along. So, that reduction was already supposed to take place from the twenty down to fifteen, however, it was brought up to twenty-five.
So, so make sure I'm understanding people correctly. You, you want to, you wanna maintain, um, LA Arts at fifteen, which is a reduction of ten from the administrative issue that happened here? There'd be fifteen for that, and ten or less for the Historical Society. If it's ten, it, this nets out zero. It won't make any change to the proposed budget number at this point.
The current twenty-five thousand dollar budget line item, which I think the intent was for that to be fifteen plus ten. So, my recommendation is to honor the original intent of that line item, to strike this additional ten, and just no budget change.
Yeah, so we'll zero this out. The twenty-five will remain in the budget.
Yeah, and that line item has, the account has always been called LA Arts. For FY twenty-six, the account is now called Arts and Culture. So, if we split those, uh, it can be between LA Arts and, and Historical Society. It doesn't specify the line as LA Arts. The detail within that line can be split, however you've, like you've just chosen.
Okay. Other questions on that one? Uh, so the next one's Boys and Girls Club. If they made a twenty thousand dollar request, they approached the city, um, and wanted to continue the funding they had previously got. In, in actuality, what happened was, we had not been giving money to the Boys and Girls Club because we were doing all the capital expenditures on the building, I think, two years ago, Council Walker, is that right? We, we did the gym floor, two, two years ago, I think. Um, we gave them twenty thousand dollars, um, out of ARPA money. So, in effect, you know, from a current services perspective, this is an additional, this would be a new twenty thousand dollars to the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah, and, and, uh, I looked at it and read it, and I, I think it is, uh, we, we did give them twenty thousand a few years back, a couple, three times in a row there, because it, uh, they weren't asking for much for repairs and stuff. But then we did give them over fifty grand, I believe, for their flooring and whatever they needed. Uh, with this, I don't mind, I feel that ten thousand will definitely help them. And the way I think they look at it, it would be like, uh, you know, a one dollar per child, or one, one hundred dollars per child with what the kids they have coming in from the Auburn side. So, I, I would cut it all down to ten thousand because of the fact that we're looking for to save money and make cuts in different places. I think they can survive. I think they got the fundraiser, and they got the people behind them. So, ten thousand, I would vote to give them.
Any other questions on this one? Um, so, we skipped the next one. We've talked about that already. The next three, Kennebec Behavioral Health, Lake Stewards of Maine, Maine Public, these are just letters requesting funding that the city has received over the next, uh, over the past few... Just letters requesting funding that the city has received over the next, uh, over the past few months. I don't have any other information about these other than the letter that's in the budget book. So any thoughts about these?
We received these. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, these are relatively small and I don't think we want to go there because I just heard today. That there are four thousand nonprofits in the Portland area. I don't know what there are here. But if you start giving out a hundred here and four hundred there, it will be an endless stream that never ends, you know, so.
I would I would agree. I I think when you're asked for a hundred and four hundred, it's less about the money and it's more about the statement that we're making as a city. Um, I think, again, I sound like I'm beating a dead horse here, but the statement I want to make is that we don't have the money this year. Um, next year, maybe we do and we can make that statement, but I, you know, four hundred, a hundred, if anybody personally on here feels terrible about that, you know. I can donate a hundred dollars to Maine Public if that is what makes me sleep at night. Um, but I think it's important that we send the right message to taxpayers and that is that this is not the year for those.
I agree full heartedly.
I agree. If we haven't given them money before, unfortunately, yeah, it's a hard year. So I would say no to Kennebec, no to Lake Stewards of Maine and no to Maine Public.
Okay, so the next one's Twin City Swim Team. This is, um, the it it's bigger than the Twin Cities that. Uh, youth from the whole general area. Um, the the swim team has, uh, uh, since the YM closed down, this is basically pool rental time at the YW. Uh, after this season, they've stopped the team. And you can see in your packet, they're looking for money to basically continue operating by being able to. Uh, uh, buy pool time at the YW. So que- questions or thoughts about this?
My question is, is it more that it's a high school team than it is anything else?
I've actually got some, I've got some good info on that. Um, this came up at the school board meeting last Wednesday. Um, so this is not in itself a high school team. This is a Twin City team. It's a lot of, it's some young folks, some older folks. But I will say, um, uh, Todd Sampson, Todd Sampson, the athletic director, mentioned that this is one of the. Bigger feeder programs into the Auburn swimming program. So when you look at the middle school and high school swimming programs right now. They're either on the chopping block or they're close to it. Attendance down. There's some bad things happening in the, um, the attendance and coaching. Uh, there's just not enough people who are interested. So I'm not, I think twenty thousand is way too high. Again, I think this is about messaging. Um, if we as a city want something like this to continue and influence the the feeding of of, uh, middle school and high school swimming programs. Perhaps we give a few thousand dollars as a show of support. Um, just recently, I believe their financial woes kind of came into the public light. Is that correct? I read an article in the paper that they had shut down and I had never read an article like that about this organization before, so. I'll stop here in two seconds, but I, the only thing I would support is if we want to discuss some amount of money, thousands of dollars. Again, I think we're making a statement to save this team, um, but I think twenty's too high.
Yeah, so I I think that's accurate from what they communicated to us that it's basically the feeder program. For all of the school swim teams in the area. The question I had is the the twenty thousand is what they need. My question was, well, where are all the swimmers coming from? Cause they're not all coming from Auburn. And what's the, if they need twenty thousand, what's a proportional amount that would be attributed to Auburn swimmers? And what about these other towns? Cause there's kids from Lewiston and Green and some of them I don't think.
Turner.
Necessary. Yeah, Turner or.
It's a feeder for the Levitt team.
All over the place. So. Um. I that that's the big question I have is, you know, um. I'm not even sure what the real number to support Auburn students are. And I think this isn't like they can maintain the team and with two thousand dollars rent one tenth of the pool time. So the question isn't just proportionally what it is. Are all these other towns gonna support this? And put in their proportional amount to raise this twenty thousand dollars? Because if nobody else is putting money in it but us, it's not gonna get them anyplace.
If you told me that Lewiston and Levitt and mine in Poland were each putting in three grand or four grand.
Right.
I would match that. I mean, I think that's the right thing to do.
I and also I believe right now, um, a fairly recent change, I think this year is that it's essentially now a regional high school team. Like, you know, the the Blue Devil, like EL, uh, Lewiston, Levitt, um, folks from other towns. Because the numbers just weren't big enough for any given, so. Keeping a feeder program like this that's regional to potentially do a, you know, a a team that may stay, remain regional for a long time. Also makes sense that we're splitting the load for across municipalities.
Council Whiting?
Uh, a close friend of mine, Chris Branch, ran this thing for free for about twenty years. Um, my understanding is they have been paying somebody to coach. Now, I don't know if, I think that person's left. And so I'm not sure if this is just about pool time or if it's for hiring. Um, they could go back to the volunteer model if that's part of their financial hardship. And I do think we could do something like we do with the Parks and Rec scholarships. Um, maybe we would support some kids from Auburn who are participating in this program. And we could quantify that from statistics that, I mean, I have Jack Marchal across the street from me who's a really good swimmer for EL. Emma Frumianto is behind me. She swims for Hebron, but she swims with this team because it's the shortage of teams. And there's a shortage of pools, but I think we need more information before we do anything.
Yeah, so I I think that my understanding, and we can verify this, is they did have a paid person running it. And they no longer have a paid person running it. My understanding was this wasn't to hire another person. It was for the pool time. But, um, you know, we we can decide if we want to put any money into this, but I think the follow ups we need from this organization is. Um, clarification on whether the twenty thousand is just pool time or whether it's also for instructors? And how many participants are from Auburn? And, you know, what the total participants are, how many from Auburn, so we can figure out what that ratio is. And our other. The originating municipalities for these other students, are they planning on covering the cost for their students? Their youth to participate in that?
Uh, one thing that I do have that might be helpful, uh, as we find that information at the last school board meeting, I do have a chart with. The cost per pupil that we pay for in every sport in Auburn. So, you know, we shouldn't be spending two thousand dollars on every swimmer, but only six hundred on every lacrosse player. So when we get to that point of more numbers, I I do have that data.
So is there a mount? Anybody wants to move in here at this time while we?
Well, maybe we put in five thousand as as a plate, a placeholder for discussion. Uh, I have no idea what the status is of Twin Cities right now. I can tell you that when my daughter was involved in it for many years, um, they did pay the coaches. It was a very small stipend. They had their own real time jobs, full time, you know, this is because at least at that time, there are well over a hundred swimmers. They had a lot of time they were putting in, um, and so, but it, I believe we did pay fees. So and there was also a lot of parents that were very active in fundraising. So anything we can give, like you you said, uh, Council Platts, it's it's the statement we're making. There's, you know, it it might also help, um. With fun fundraisers from other people if they knew that that municipalities were investing in this for the future too.
Yeah, I agree. I I think I I definitely need more information. All that's key, so thank you for that. I I would like to know, well, the thing is like, uh, your point on fundraising. I mean, I I see there was a news article about it. There was a lot of comments, a lot of questions about it. So I definitely agree with clarification. Is this gonna go to hire somebody or is this gonna go to the kids for the for that? So that's a, that's a big comment. Um, my concern is tough year, so, I mean, is there any other farm teams that are now gonna come back to us at any other time asking for money? That's another concern. So, uh, all some are va- all are valid to me, so I I would like some to hear some of that information. And I'm open discussion about it.
Anything else on this item? Um, okay, so given the time, I guess, uh, I I think the the one last discussion that we should have tonight is. Um. Uh, putting these items in that we've talked about, um. With no revenue adjustments, Mr. Manager, you're calculating us at the same time. We'll see if we get the same number here. So, so what I'm looking at, the the tax levy increase, total tax levy increase would be seventeen point two percent. Yeah, cause what we've talked about adds nine hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
I I dropped. I I added a little bit more revenue in for sticker sale and not having stuff. So, yeah, I'm at sixteen, sixteen and a half on the tax levy right now.
So if. So just for purposes of discussion, um. Leave aside the, um, leave aside a minute whether there's stickers or not. You know, we have an ongoing discussion regarding especially two items, permitting fees and parking fees, which are things that are being subsidized. By the general taxpayers for services that are very specific for youth by an individual. So if you, if just for estimation here, even if you put three hundred thousand dollars in revenue adjustment, that gets you to sixteen point one.
Yeah, yeah, I was, um, I was at eight hundred and twenty thousand net expense increase.
Eight twenty, yeah, so this is like six ninety nine if you put three hundred in there. So so the question is clearly, I I don't think that. Maybe I'll be surprised, but I don't think there's any counselor that thinks that a sixteen percent increase in the tax levy is acceptable. So I think. We're gonna go through a process. Start next Monday night of working down through. What are the particular programs and services that we think should be eliminated or curtailed that'll drive this number down? And I think the question is. What's the thought of the council about what number we're driving to, right? Because if we have some counselors that think, you know, well, let's shave three points off this and somebody else thinks it ought to be flat funded. And someone else thinks we ought to shave ten points off it. It's gonna be a very difficult discussion to keep everybody comparing apples to apples. So what what are people's thoughts on what the, um, you know, what the, um. What tax levy percent number are we talking about, right? Cause what's baked in here now is, um. Uh, already the revenue and the budget from outside sources that we know about, right? So fifty five percent for school fundings in there, general revenue sharing's in there. Those are the two, the two big ones. There's, you know, some smaller ones, excise tax, uh, reimbursement for other programs. But taking all that into account. Wha- what is the number that people think we ought to be trying to work down to?
I think there's two answers to that. One is, what do I want the number to be and what and what is feasible?
Uh, I. That that's a very good point.
I think that in an ideal world, I'd I'd want to see us cut three and a half million dollars from this budget and ru- I think roughly drop it ten ten points. I mean, I think a tax levy increase of four to six percent is something I could defend to a taxpayer. Uh, that said, I have not gotten into the nitty gritty yet of this budget. I mean, I've looked at everything once, but. I don't know if that's feasible. I don't know how many services or positions we're talking about. I mean, it's obviously a lot. It's significant. So I would love to see three to six, I'd say four to seven percent tax levy increase. But I don't know if I'm willing to cause that much pain either. So that's where I don't know yet.
Yeah, so may maybe to clarify a little, I don't think this is a hard number that at this point we'd say that we're going to get to. I think it's, let's, let's see what number we want to work down to. We may find, oh, it's easy to get to that number and it should be lower. We may find it's very difficult and and counselors say I'm not willing to cut the things that'll get us there. But it'll at least give us something to drive to and we'll see where we get. I I don't think at this point anybody's looking for someone to say, this is the number I know I have it that. It can be this much or it can be low. Yeah, so Council Walker?
Uh, the way the way I look at it is the, we have the school department and we have the city of Auburn. And I'm looking at maybe the school department looking back at their budget and bringing it down, uh, at least a million and a half. And they got fund balance that they can play with to find that kind of money if they need to. And the city of Auburn, I'm looking at approximately the same thing, a million and a half, so. Uh, between the two is three million dollar cut.
Um. Council Whiting?
Um, I, so. I'm probably gonna get some flack for this, but I I I would like to see a number. I know it would cut a lot of services. I would like some research to know if, I mean, we hear it from the citizens and, but I I would like to see if. A flat number. Are we gonna get there? But if we really did a flat number, what is that gonna cut? I I would like to see what the, the, what the results would that be. I know that's a, that's all, you know, all.
So so just to clarify and make sure I'm understanding, when you say a flat number, you you mean. Last year plus the whatever it is, two point nine, three percent inflation? Or are you saying the same amount spent last year, which in effect is a, in real money, a three percent reduction over what we spent last year?
That's a good question. Um. So with. I I'm gonna have to look into that. I I.
So so ju- just to be clear, and the city manager can tell me if my numbers are right here. If we were to have flat budget from last year. That would cause eight, we'd have to cut eight and a half round numbers, eight and a half million dollars out of where we are today with the additions that we put in. You agree with that?
If, well, it depends on, um, I just want to make sure I'm backing into it the same way you are because I look.
Well, I I'll tell you the line I'm looking at.
Okay.
So I'm looking at total expenses, right? FY twenty five to total expenses FY twenty six. And if we add it in today for discussion, as we go through the prioritization of the budget, we added in nine hundred ninety nine thousand nine hundred. Uh, I'm looking at that saying in FY twenty five, it was a hundred and twenty one point eight three rounded off million. And now we'd be at a hundred and thirty point oh nine. You see that same number? So, so.
So what I would say is to get to, if you want to be at a hundred and twenty one, eight twenty five, where we were last year. You have to take what we funded last year and reduce that by two point eight million dollars to cover your debt service.
Right, right. Without, without, cause there's a difference in the debt service. Right, so.
Correct. And county tax, so actually it's three point one.
Right, so where this is gonna get a little difficult is there's certain things we're obligated to pay. At a higher rate this year than the prior year. You can't flat fund it for the prior year. So the manager's point is well taken, which is round numbers. If you want to spend the same amount in the last year, you'd have to take last year's budget and cut three million dollars out of it. Basically, to reach the same point. Just to get to the one twenty one.
Right.
Right? Because you gotta take tho- that those intergovernmental things unless you, you know, you can't change the county tax. I guess you could change nine one one in L A T C, your contribution to them. But, um, you can't change the county tax, you can't change the debt service, um.
We had a minimal revenue increase of three hundred, so you're at, you're at two point. We had a minimal revenue increase of three hundred, so you're at, you're at two point eight. So, you'd have to, you'd have to reduce two point eight million off.
Off last year.
Last year.
Operation, plus the added, for what remains, the added, whoops, excuse me, the added expense for this year. So, you know, just, just round numbers, you're cutting out of the budget eight and a half, nine million dollars. But that eight and a half and nine million dollars, you can't take out of every line, right? So, Council Milks and I had a discussion about this a, a week or so ago, right? You know, this, you can't cut out of debt service. You can't cut out of general assistance. You're obligated by state law to do those things. You can't, you're not gonna get any savings by reducing Norway Savings Bank Arena, because on an operational basis, it's a revenue account.
They're not in this budget, right.
So, you, you're, yeah, so.
I think also important to, to clarify, if we're talking about flat, is like, do you want the operational expenses to remain flat? Do you want the tax levy to remain flat? Like, those are all different. I could say I want the operational expenses to remain flat, but the tax levy may go up because revenue went down, or.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that would be one point without the additions that you made today. Well, actually, with the additions you made today, that means you'd have to reduce the municipal operating by, by two million to get to just the municipal operation to remain flat.
Right. Yeah, because part of what's compounding this, you know, if you look at this, with, with what we added today, your operating funds for the city would go up five point five, and the school would go up five point nine. What's compounding that, besides some debt service increase, is a dramatic decrease in the run rate over which revenue is increasing, right? So, if you go back and you look at this budget, since twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, both the city and the municipal side have been averaging between ten and eleven percent increase in non-property tax revenue per year. So, since that, it's three point two or something this year, right? Is that right? It's, it's our three, three and something. So, your, your operating costs are going up, and you're, and because your non-property tax revenue increase has dropped off dramatically, in effect, that drop off in revenue is taking money off the non-property tax side and putting it on the property tax side. So, it's compounding the increase.
That's why that property tax levy percentage looks so nasty compared to the percentage increase of the operational budget. It's inflated because of what the mayor's saying. They're not inflated, compounded.
And to me, the three drivers of that are a, a decrease in the, in the rate of increase of non-property tax funds. That's, that's one of the items, you know, increase in the budget is another one. But the capital, the, the C I P is problematic. But, you know, so when we looked at this, right, what's driving this? Well, we added some deferred maintenance projects last year. We got Engine Two coming in. We have the first bond on the fire station. This is a little problematic, and to me, when you look at, if we're talking about the school budget or the municipal budget being reduced, the percentage to look at there is the operating fund level. Because everything's not equal with these capital projects, right? It's funny, I was talking to the city manager, and I started going back and looking at this, and in twenty thirteen, I think Council Walker was the only one that was here, in twenty thirteen, a couple of years prior to that, the council zeroed out, no capital money whatsoever. They were having this discussion in twenty thirteen, and they were pointing out, in the next five years, we have to replace Engine Two. We gotta replace the police station. We gotta replace the fire station. We gotta fix Marrow Road. That, that conversation was taking place in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and here we are, more than ten years later, and we're just now doing Engine Two, and we're just getting started on the, on the central fire and police, and we're just doing Marrow Road. And part of the issue was, it was allotted deferred capital improvement projects, so they didn't fund anything. And then we went along, and we had this period where capital improvement projects, the can was kicked down the road so that we would create room without a tax increase for, for the Edward Little High School, for the twenty-something million of the bonding there. But now, here we are, right? We got to a point where we've got, we got a, Engine Two's a seventy-year-old building, right? It should have been replaced at least twenty years ago, and my guess is at the time, they were building this building, and the conversation was, oh, we can't do that at the same time. So, we've got a, a large, you know, there's things that have to be repaired to keep them running, and it's caught up to us. There's, there's not a lot of room to kick this stuff down the road. So, you know, between the, between the cost of doing business going up, the decrease in non-property tax revenue and the capital expenditures, that's really what I think's driving the budget. And, and we can't, in this year's budget, capital expenditure is not an issue, because whatever you do in C I P this year, it doesn't take effect. It's not gonna hit your budget till next year. So, we're going to have no control over non-property tax revenue, and it's not gonna get any better, I guess is a nice way to paint this picture. We're very, very fortunate that we're getting fifty-five percent, and we're getting a two-plus-something million dollar increase. And in general aid to education, basically revenue sharing's gonna be flat. And so, it's gonna focus the reductions on operating budget. So, other, other thoughts, I guess we, we've. Council Wyner posed these questions, and we got on this long discussion.
No, I, I, you know, it became a long discussion, but I think it's important for the taxpayers to know, and I think that was a great discussion, and I appreciate that, because a lot of this is discussion for people that always say, hey, we should keep it flat. Those discussions do come up, and I appreciate you explaining that, because that's, that's what the taxpayer, they can look at this, and, and it can answer some of their questions. I know it's, it's kind of on a different discussion, I know it's time, but it, it helps the taxpayer explain this. So, you know, why is my taxes, why is there one, two percent increase? Why are we trying to get it down to where we are? You know, these questions come up, and I appreciate, even though, you know, to get my answer and my question, and it helps me so I can have these discussions. Because we look in this budget packet and we see, okay, you know, back to twenty-three, twenty-four actual expended for total budget, you know, a hundred and ten million. Then it goes up the next year after that. Council adopted it. It's up to a total of a hundred and twenty-one million. You keep seeing roughly as about ten, you know, I'm rounding up at about ten million dollars. So, you know, if you keep, if you keep that number and you keep going, by the time that my, my son graduates from Edward Little High School, you know, the, the buddy is gonna be, you know, up there quite a bit. So, you know, there is factors that are gonna do this, but I mean, these are, these are things that I'm looking at that roughly it's going up about ten thousand dollars every year. So, in ten, ten years, you know, that's a hundred thousand dollars that will be potentially, if these numbers don't change, that will be, will be at, you know, a two hundred and thirty, thirty million dollar budget for both the school and that. That's, there are considerations that, okay, we, you know, we need to have this discussion. You know, everybody talks about keeping it flat in some way, what, how, what flat is? But, you know, I think that it's a discussion that needs to happen in this, to have an explanation. I, I think, you know, what, Council Platts, I'm sorry, it's gone kind of like you said off to, what was your two, two, three?
What cuts I'd be looking for?
Yeah.
If that's feasible, I don't know. That's just what I'm looking for.
Yeah, so you, so, so when we were at the tax levy number, you were at four to seven?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know if three and a half million in cuts relates to ten points off the tax levy. I was just doing rough math in my head, but, and you don't need to confirm that.
Jen, I mean, we'll work down through it, but I think sticking a finger in the wind, that's pretty close. Council Cowan, what's your thoughts?
Uh, it's similar. I think aiming for five to seven percent. I think that's where we gotta try to, try to work at, and if we can get lower, great, but I, I think that's more realistic in terms of costs go up, and so, the part of that is, you know, we, we have to, you know, so, five to seven percent.
Council Wyner?
I'm in the same place, and I, I come at it from a different direction. I come at it from housing. I was in housing for forty years, and when I first started, people were paying twenty-five percent of their income for rent. That was considered affordable. In the eighties, we had escalating costs, high inflation. That number changed to thirty percent. I wouldn't be surprised if you saw in federal housing programs, that number going to thirty-three percent. If you look at what people are paying privately, people that aren't receiving housing assistance, or in subsidized housing, or tax credit housing, wherever, they're paying increasingly higher numbers, you know, higher percentage of their income towards their housing costs. Price of housing is through the roof. If you look at our costs, the bonding costs are higher because of the cost of construction. We don't really have control of these intergovernmental costs, which are, you know, it's a nine percent increase there. So, even if we can do better than that, we still have that hit on a pretty good percentage of the budget. So, it, it's really hard for us to, I, I, it's impossible to get to zero without slashing and burning. So, I think that five to seven is, you know, probably as, as good as we can do, and even that's gonna be painful.
Okay, so, I, I would propose that the number we drive towards is five percent to see where we get. I, I think that, I, I think.
Tax levy increase?
Tax levy increase.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, because, look, it all depends which year you're in, right? So, last year, the, the tax levy increase was really the only fixed number because we didn't know what was going to happen on the assessing side. So, I think this year, we're not gonna know till here for a few more weeks, right? Because in effect, the books don't close in assessing till April first, and it, you know, they're not gonna figure this out the next morning when they come in. Just watching the market, it seems to me that it's unlikely that there's going to be any type of adjustment like we previously had on residential and multifamily. What's that?
Unlikely.
Unlikely to have an adjustment upwards?
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna go up or down. I don't, I, I don't think there's been enough movement if you, if you, you know, the housing data gets published every month. If you, if you follow that, it doesn't appear that there's going to be enough movement to cause a market rate adjustment either way on multifamily or residential. It's not that the, not that the value of those properties hasn't gone up. The question is, has it, has it gone up enough that the data that's captured by the assessor would drive a market rate adjustment? And we're, we're gonna find out, but I think for today, we, we should sort of think that it's more likely than not that won't happen. And it's more likely than not that on the commercial industrial side, because of the small number of sales, it's unlikely there's going to be data to support doing anything with that either. If we end up in a situation where there are no market rate adjustments, everything being equal, the mill rate is a good indicator. Because what, what, right, what I hear in the community is, hey, we toss all these numbers around. Which one of these is gonna tell me what I'm writing on my check, right? That's what people wanna know. And if you have no market rate adjustment, the mill rate will inform you that, because just through new construction renovation projects, things that go on, you know, we're going to get some type of a total valuation increase by the assessor's office. And, you know, that'll take the mill rate down a little bit. So, but I think for the immediate exercise, we should drive towards what would it mean to get a number, see what it would take, and it's gonna be painful, but what's the tolerance for how much pain we're willing to take on here to drive to five percent? And then, as information comes in from the assessor's office, we'll know about any type of market rate increases, which seem unlikely. We'll understand what the valuation increase is. And once we get that data, we can be looking at the mill rate adjustment would make, I think, a little more sense once the assessor's office comes in.
Mr. Mayor, just to quite make sure I'm understanding this right, the math of it all. So, a five percent tax levy increase refers to a five percent increase on the overall tax revenue brought into the city of Auburn. So, if the tax base goes up one or two or three percent, I don't know what a common increase in tax value goes up, but that means that the average increase on the individual will be less than five percent, right? Because some percentage of that would be made up by new business. So, five percent means the average taxpayer would pay a little bit less than a five percent increase.
Yeah, so you basically got it. What we'd be saying is, since, you know, a variable in this is the non-property tax revenue that comes in, basically the tax levy, we're saying, if we take the total budget that we get to and we subtract the non-property tax revenue, what do we have to raise in the tax levy, and how much of a percentage is, is that of an increase over the tax levy last year? You're correct. If we then, let's, let's say we get to that, and then there is an increase in valuation, you know, it takes, it, it, it takes a lot to, to move it. But if you look at the data, it, I think it's fair to say, given the briefing that we had by planning and permitting here, I think last month or six weeks ago, there will be a, a overall increase in the city's valuation, and that will, in effect, spread that tax levy over additional valuation, and it'll incrementally kick down your mill rate. Probably not a lot, but it'll kick it down. And if there's no market rate adjustments, I think that's the number that'll inform people, because they'll have the same valuation as last year, and that'll inform them how their taxes are changing. Other, other questions or thoughts?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
When you say we're gonna give the information that we're looking at all five percent, is that gonna say the manager's gonna come back where, where he thinks that five percent's gonna be removed, or saved?
I, I don't think so. I think that five percent is going to be millions of dollars. You know, if this is like last year, we got down to a hundred thousand we were looking for at the end, I think it's fair to say to the manager, hey, go root around the couch cushions and find some quarters here for us, right? And come back, tell us where you're gonna marginally change things to find a hundred thousand dollars. When you're talking about cutting millions of dollars, you're talking about eliminating programs or, or curtailing programs or some piece of that, right? Some, some combination of those two things. And now you're into talking policy issues, right? You know, and I'll just give some examples. I'm not suggesting this is the cut, just to illustrate the point, okay? If you eliminate all of parks and recreation and everything they do, it'll save you six hundred thousand dollars, right? You, you know, you, you could say, well, we're gonna cut, you know, ten police officers, or we're gonna cut a piece of fire apparatus, or we're not gonna have, you know, we're gonna stack ambulance calls. That's what we're talking about. So, I think the next step of this is for us to, we'll come back with a number. We'll, I'll work with the city manager and the finance director and say, okay, given these things we've added in, where we are with the revenue, what type of, what's the number that we have to reduce the budget by between the school and the municipal side to, to get us to five percent, right? And then I think the first discussion we should have with that number next Monday night is, and, and we'll, once we get this, we'll circulate it around, right? I don't wanna do it on the fly, because we might not get it exactly right. I think the first point then would be, okay, what of that? I think the first point then would be, okay, what, of that number, what amount of that money do we think should be dealt with on the municipal budget and what should be dealt with on the school budget? Because on the school side, we're going to need to communicate that to the chair of the school board and the superintendent and say, okay, Counsel Platts will be there because he's on the school board as well. You tell us, if, if you have to get to that number, what's that going to mean? So we understand what, what the cuts would be. And then on the municipal side, we'll start going down through the programs and, and basically saying, hey, this is the number on the municipal side. You know, it's really reverse prioritization. What, what, what do you think of the lowest priority items and that you would eliminate or curtail certain services? And, and then, then we'll have to obviously have the help of the manager and the finance director to say, okay, if we're doing that, what's that exact number? What's that get us to? Does that, that sound right? Okay. Um, anything else for this evening? Appreciate, everybody's been here quite a while, a lot of work's gone on and we've got a lot more to do, but I do appreciate people's attention to, to the issues.
Thank you. Um, I guess just one question for you and Phil. So for next week, if we have suggestions about budget, you want, you want our discreet suggestions about what department, what service? That's what, I asked that, Phil, because like on the school side, that's not what Dr. Doris wants to hear. They want to hear a number and then they go and figure out. So I just want to be clear.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So on the school side, since the council only approves the gross number, basically what we would be communicating to the school board and the superintendent is, hey, we see your proposal, we don't think we can approve that number. We think it needs to be this much less. That's all we communicate to them. The, the superintendent and the school board will come back to us and say, this is what that means. On the municipal side, it's, you know, what programs and services we think that we, we would be cutting back. And, you know, if you have them ahead of time, great, you can, sorry, send them in or, but next Monday is going to be here before we know it. So at least people should bring those thoughts to the meeting and then we can work through that at the, at the next workshop. Anything else for tonight? No? If not, uh, the workshop will be adjourned and we will, uh, be back in session 5:30 next Monday night for the third budget workshop.